Regular session of the Montgomery County School Board to order. The time is 7:00 PM on Tuesday, May 5th, 2015. Would all rise for the reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Our first item is the adoption of the agenda. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Would all those please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have an agenda. Our first item on the agenda is public address. At each of our regularly scheduled meetings, the Montgomery County Public School System sets aside up to thirty minutes for the public to address the board on areas, on items related to the educational system here in Montgomery County. Each speaker is given three minutes to speak. When you come to the podium, we'd ask that you would state your name and your address, and then your three minutes will begin. Want to remind you of a couple of rules that we have with this. First and foremost, I would ask that the audience, I know that there are some emotionally charged issues that are going to be discussed here tonight. I ask the audience to please maintain a certain level of composure so that we can get through this. There are a lot of speakers here, and it will only impede those, the people who actually want to speak and the time that they are given. Also, be reminded that none of the board members will directly respond to any of your questions, but from that point forward, if there is discussion later in the evening during new or old business, then we may choose to address some of those issues. With that said, we do have almost thirty folks signed up to speak, and we will begin now at the end of thirty minutes. If we are still not completely through our entire list, the board can vote to extend the public address time, at which time we will discuss that, do that, and vote on that to extend the time if it is needed. With that said, we'll start. Our first person up to speak is Crystal Zirkle.
Good evening. After speaking at the last meeting, my three minutes runs rather quickly, so if I may, I'm going to cut to the chase. After looking around this room this evening, you can plainly see there are quite a few of us who still oppose this time change for several reasons in which I'm sure my fellow speakers will be talking about. Although I address my concerns, such as safety and my seven-year-old having to get up at 5:00 AM while this time change is catering to my fourteen-year-old, who also highly opposes this time change as well. You see, my thing is, none of us were really given any kind of answers. The board named off several beneficial factors to this change, but never really looked at the bad, like the after-school care. How will after-school programs, daycares, and so forth meet the needs of these children if we triple the, if we triple the amount of them? How will us, living as single parents, afford this care? Does this mean more time spent at overcrowded after-school care and not enough supervision? What about the transportation to these facilities? You see, there are lots of questions we still have. We were also told these buses will run approximately forty minutes apart. Isn't that pushing it a little? Personally, our bus drivers take extra time now to help with the smaller children. If these drivers are rushed and it's dark, wouldn't that mean chaos for the little ones? What about the handicapped children, or the ones with special needs? Or the ones that take a little longer than normal to get on and off the bus? You guys really believe trying to fix something that isn't broken is really going to work? We're here to tell you this evening that this and will cause major confusion, delay, and chaos with the county. The survey spoke for themselves, yet you've disregarded any and everything we've addressed. As parents, your decisions should be based on our suggestions and recommendations. I feel as if what we've addressed now for the second time doesn't really have any concern. I'm sure I'm not the only person in this room that feels this way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next on the list is Karen Myers. And after Karen Myers, Drew Myers. Also want to remind you that the timer is on the screen throughout the room, and make sure you speak into the mic so that all can hear.
My name is Karen Myers. I live at 4902 Mount Tabor Road, Blacksburg, Virginia. I'm here tonight to advocate for my child and my family. I have over twenty-five years of experience working with children, families, and parents in this community, and have researched and educated myself regarding the issue of school start times. I agree there is plenty of literature and research out there regarding sleep, sleep deprivation, and personal sleep needs. If I truly believed that this was in the best interest of my child and other children, I would be in support of it 110%. I would be the one that would be saying, yes, let's do it. However, there is so much more than this. Here are some thoughts. Correlation doesn't mean causation. Anybody who does research realizes that. There are many things in this world today that are directly causing issues with our kids. I say SOLs are right there at the top. Trying to fix student achievement with one Band-Aid is not the solution. Let parents who know their own children work on individual academic performance. It is not this board's responsibility to make decisions regarding my child, family, or my personal choices. That is my role as a parent. I know my child, and so do the parents that are in this room. It is this board's responsibility to make decisions based on the community they represent. Engage, encourage, empower, not just words. There is not a community infrastructure to support this drastic change. Why the rush? Six months for a decision that has such potential for negative impact? Why was this pushed through with multiple changes coming up for this board? You could see a 50% change by 2016. Just a few more thoughts. What will you do with kids that attend governor's school? They start at seven in the morning. What about looking at electives in the morning and core classes in the afternoons? What about a zero period? How many of you have ridden a school bus lately on one of these routes that you're saying can be done in this time? Where will you find quality childcare for the children? Quality staff to fill those positions? Oh yeah, with a member of your committee who would benefit financially if 35% more children needed childcare in our community? What was the methodology when you administered a mandatory survey to my daughter and many others to complete while at school? Almost half of your responses were from secondary kids. Thanks for asking their opinions, but at my house, the parents are in charge. Where is the data that shows better test scores in Region 6 with similar schedules? That's the data I want to see. If I ask you how you are feeling right now, would you say you were tired? Is it a very common response for people to say that, especially kids, when you're asking them to complete a survey? But what does it really mean? You cannot determine how much sleep kids get. You can, however, work with families in the community to make the best decisions for our children as a whole, not just for their academic performance. There is certainly more to creating a healthy person than how they perform on tests. Please reconsider your decision to change start times in our community.
Thank you. Excuse me, is there a problem with the timer? It went off the screen?
No, it just clicked it by mistake.
Okay. Next on the list is Drew Myers, and after Drew Myers, Lori Root.
Hello, my name is Drew Myers, and I live at 4902 Mount Tabor Road in Blacksburg. I disagree with the changing of the school times for multiple reasons. First of all, I work on a farm after school, and if school and times change, I will have to stay there longer. With this, I will have less time to work on my schoolwork, which you don't want if I hear correctly. There are many similar cases to this with my friends and many high schoolers at Blacksburg High. School time changes, with the school time changes, I would also have to stay later, and that means a quick dinner and then to bed, so I could have some time to do homework in the morning. This leaves little time to talk and socialize with my family. I also have a sister, who is now 24, who graduated from BHS with a 4.0 average. The school times worked for her and many of her friends. Also, if the school times change, I won't have a lot of time for my family, as I said. Also, another thing is, most high schoolers won't do what you think they will and work more on homework. I hear every day now that they won't have to do the homework as quick. Most higher, high schoolers will just procrastinate even more. And lastly, if we do have this time change and get used to it, then we'll have a hard time adapting to college even more due to early classes. Also, I personally go to sleep around 9:30 to 10:00, and I usually can't go past those times. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm going to ask that everyone hold your applause. It is going to eat into the time that we have tonight. I know everyone wants to express their happiness with what is being said, but please hold your applause. After Ms. Root will be Lisa Carter.
Hello, my name is Lori Root, and I live at 506 Switchback Road in Christiansburg. Good evening, Chairman Lyons, board members, and Ms. Blackburn. I'm here this evening to ask to discuss the school start times. On April 21st, the board voted a four-three change, a four-three vote to change school start times in the 2016-2017 school year. I'm here tonight to ask you to please rescind this vote and not change the times. I created a Facebook change on April 21st, and as of now, we have 967 members that are opposed to this change. We're from all over the county, different socioeconomic backgrounds, and our children are in a variety of ages from four to 18. Tonight, we stand before you in a sea of blue. We're all, we're here tonight for unity, from community to community. I stand before you tonight to ask you to think about a bus driver. Can they safely do a 45-minute route in the 40 minutes you proposed? Starting at 7:00 AM, doing their complete route, checking their post departures, their checklist that they have to do, and then start their secondary routes at 7:40? It can't happen. Not safely, it cannot. Next, think about the added cost to the parents because their children may or may not have to eat school breakfast. Now, not only have you added expenses in the afternoon for after-school care, now you've added some more food for them to think about, too. What about the economic factor of small business owners like dance studios, who offer classes at different hours on different days? One particular dance studio owner said, "I will have to reschedule all the classes and try to find qualified dance instructors to teach at the new hours because of the time change. If I cannot locate the new instructors, children would not be able to participate in the dance classes they take now." Such, for instance, my daughter, who clogs and does other dances as well. In conclusion, I ask you to revisit and revise this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Lisa Carter, and after Lisa is Coltrane, I think it's Marunich, Marinich. Correct my grammar later.
My name is Lisa Carter. I live at 365 Windsor Drive, and I'd like to start by thanking those of you who responded to my email. Whether we agree or not, I appreciate your time. I would also like to start with a statement that most people here know that have been researching this time and sleep issue, that six-to-12-year-olds need 10 to 11 hours of sleep a night. And we know that children who are sleep deprived may lose the ability to remain focused and to retain learned information. Yesterday, I got to visit my son's elementary school where he'll be starting kindergarten in the fall. They told us at the parent meeting that even though school starts at nine, they prefer the students to arrive between 8:30 and 8:45, so they have time to get settled. And it makes sense, no one goes straight to work and jumps right into what you're doing. So I sat there and thought about the fact that even though the start time will be moved to eight next in 2016, it actually means he'll have to be at school between 7:30 and 7:45 to have, you know, an optimal day and be ready to start learning. In order to do that, my son, who does not like to sleep anyway, that's my own personal problem, but he will have to be in bed at seven o'clock in the evening in order to wake up at six, hopefully will be awake enough to eat breakfast, not too groggy to get on the bus safely. And then, in the evening, because I work, and as does my husband during the day, we will have very limited family time. You all know, as people involved in the school board and educators, that family is essential to education. There's countless studies to show how important family involvement is to children and their learning. They do better on tests, they get better grades, they have better attendance, and if we take that away at an early age, I'm not sure that we're promoting lifelong learning. I'm very concerned about the after-school care that I would have to use for my child. I have a wonderful daycare situation right now, but even with that, they struggle to find care in the afternoons. There are not a lot of people that are willing or able to work two to three hours for very minimal pay, so I have a lot of concerns about that. The daycare providers say they're going to step up and accommodate this, but how? They'll have to pay them more money and then pass it on to the parents, and it's just a financial downward spiral. I have a concern about the mission statement of the county, which is that every student will graduate career and college-ready and become a productive and responsible citizen. I don't know how we're promoting that by changing the time to accommodate them sleeping in, because they're still teenagers when they start their first job and when they go to college. Are we going to ask colleges to stop having eight o'clock classes? My final biggest concern about this whole issue is the issue of transparency that you have talked about before, and open communication. This was voted on on April 21st and passed. This is going to happen, and it is still not even on your own website. There was an article about Ms. Blackburn's resignation, but there is no article, no update of the start times. At work today, someone said to me, "When are they going to vote on the start times?" And I said, "They already have." I know it was in the paper, but it wasn't on your own website. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Coltrane, after Coltrane is John Neal.
I apologize for butching your last name. It's okay, everybody does it. My name is Coltrane Monrich. I live at 323 Newtown Road, Shawsville, Virginia. I'm a little disappointed that Mr. Ivors is not here tonight, but I'll go with my speech anyway. I'm a member of the Parents That Want to Be Heard. We come here today for your undivided attention. We are not just parents, we are teachers, we are students, local law enforcement, small business owners, everything that makes this community and county so great. We range in the thousands, and we come here today in a sea of blue to say no to the new time change. The negative impact on this county as a whole is far greater than the goals you are trying to achieve with this time change. I urge you to listen to what we have to say, put yourself in their shoes. We will, we will give you not only the biological science, but the psychological science, the sociological science, the economical science, and the practical science, that this time change will not work for this county. We are not those people. We are those people of Montgomery County, and we will not stand for this time change. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is John Neal, and after John Neal is Sherry Trout Van Dyke. Is John Neal here? Sherry Trout Van Dyke, and after Sherry Trout Van Dyke, Andrew Van Dyke.
My name is Sherry Trout Van Dyke. I live at 635 Tower Road in Christiansburg, Virginia. The National Center for Missing and Exploited Children released a document titled, "Child Abduction: Protecting Your Child at School Bus Stops," in which they state, and I quote, "In today's world of dual-working parent families, a parent waiting at the bus stop with a child is not always possible." They recommend staying out of dark areas to avoid abductions. They also report that between February 2005 through January 2014, 32% of attempted child abductions were school bus stop-related. Don't fool yourselves into thinking that it doesn't happen here. The Virginia State Police annual crime reports show Montgomery County has had 14 abductions in the last four years. Earlier this year, a man tried to take my son while we were waiting for the school bus, but once the man saw I was there, too, he sped off as quickly as possible. Myself and our neighbors saw it, and I filed a police report, but if the new time change had been in effect, we wouldn't have seen anything because it would have been dark. He could have been snatched while he was right in front of me. I want you to look at his face, and you tell me, test scores are worth his life. They're not. Now, I realize it may be easy for some of you to sit there and pass a vote that endangers our children. I get that. You don't see who they are. That's the face of those victims. One hour may not seem like much, but according to a 2013 joint crime study from William &amp; Mary along with the University of Virginia researchers, I quote, "Criminal activity is highest when it's dark. When it comes to crime, that one-hour shift makes all the difference." It terrifies me that if this time change goes through, our elementary school children will be in grave danger. But you hold no culpability, right? You're just casting a vote. None of you got to sit in those chairs by being followers. So instead of following other school systems and voting to endanger our young children, be the trailblazers. Make those other school systems want to follow us. By simply cutting five minutes off of each secondary class and lunch period, you will create an extra 30 minutes that they can spend at home sleeping to prepare for those tests. No matter how you cut it, pushing back the start time by an hour does not give an extra hour of time, because there are still only 24 hours in a day. The only true way to give them extra time is to cut it out of the school day. All these people here wearing blue, we are Montgomery County. We are the visionaries. We are the parents who want to be heard, and we will not be ignored. Please, don't switch the current start times. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Andrew Van Dyke, and after Andrew is Nicole Pierman.
Hi, my name is Andrew Van Dyke. I go to Flying Branch Elementary. I live at 635 Tower Road, Christiansburg, Virginia. I say we keep the start times like they are because some kids are afraid of the dark and are not strong enough to defend themselves from kidnappers or dangers. You might not see any dark. And if you switch the times, the little kids will be waiting at the bus in the dark. Little kids may not see very well in the dark, so you'll have to put more lights up, and that costs more money. The younger kids would probably fall asleep on the bus because it's dark so early, and they might be left on the bus occasionally, or someone would have to wake them up, which holds up the bus line. Some parents would have to change their schedule and get off of work early to be home when their kid gets home, and they won't make as much money as they used to. My mom would have to close down her business for several years until my baby sister is old enough to go to middle school. Pushing the older kids' time back an hour just means that they will be staying up an hour later because teachers are still having out, giving out the same amount of homework. The only way to get more sleep is to make the school day shorter, cancel after-school activities, or tell teachers to stop giving so much homework. I will be in the secondary school by the time the switch happens, but I will be worried about my little sister waiting in the dark. Will you please think about making the school day shorter instead with block scheduling? Some classes are one hour and 30 minutes long. You could cut five minutes off of each class and lunch, and it would add up to us getting out 40 minutes earlier, so we would have more time to study and sleep. Lots of older kids have free periods and study halls, so they won't be missing any classes anyway, and missing five minutes of class alone still leaves plenty of time for morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Nicole Pierman. After Nicole is Dana Lacy.
Good evening, my name's Nicole Pierman. I live at 40 Salem Lane, Christiansburg, Virginia. At the time that this schedule change is scheduled to take place, I will have one kindergartner and two second graders at Prices Fork Elementary School, and I will have one sixth grader in Blacksburg Middle School. I have many concerns about this decision, but tonight I'm only going to focus on those that affect my family specifically. Currently, my children go to sleep around 8:30, which is difficult to achieve. With the time change, they will need to go to bed at 7:30 in order to get enough sleep. This is going to leave me as a parent with some very difficult decisions to make. My husband is a high school band director. Frequently throughout the school year, especially in the fall, he gets home at or after 6:00. Well, when the schedule changes, that's going to become 7:00, and I just said my children will have to go to bed at 7:30. He also works on many Saturdays. Now, multiple studies have shown that having dinner as a family is beneficial to children. It boosts their vocabulary, it increases their emotional well-being, and their academic achievements, and in adolescence, it prevents, or goes a long way towards preventing drug and alcohol abuse and other damaging behavior. But now, parents will be faced with the decision, are we going to have a family dinner? Are we going to put our kids to bed so they can get enough sleep? Research shows that an active and involved father is extremely important in children's lives, and I don't think my family's the only one that will suffer from this. My husband is that dad. He takes the kids outside to play, he helps with their homework, he reads to them, he puts them to bed at night, and in general, he just loves interacting with them. But if they're getting ready for bed by the time he gets home from school, a lot of that will never happen, and they will lose out on that. Do I let them stay up later to spend time with dad, or do I make them go to bed so they're well-rested the next day? Extracurricular activities, including dance classes, gymnastics, sports, music lessons, and church activities, are not scheduled around school schedules. They're scheduled around adult work schedules. Now, parents are going to have to make the decision, do we allow our children to continue to participate in these life-enriching activities, or do we say, no, you have to stay home and go to bed? There are plenty of other concerns that have already been touched on. The idea of a four-year-old waiting at the bus stop in the dark in January, the idea of the additional expense for childcare. Teenagers are now going to be an hour later getting home from their activities, again affecting family time. Student athletes on the high school level will now miss an additional hour of instructional time when they have to leave school early to go to a game. And then there are the financial implications. I don't think we can ignore the fact that we have faced a shortfall in this county for several years now. We have had to eliminate teaching positions, we have had to increase class sizes, I see it at my own children's school.
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Thank you.
Next is Dana Lacy, and after Dana is Harley Stevers.
Good evening, my name is Dana Lacy. I'm live at 1635 Sherwood Drive in Christiansburg. I'm here tonight to plead with you to reverse the decision made by this board to change elementary school times in favor of secondary students. This is a mistake. This is irresponsibly heading forth into a decision that will maybe help our secondary students, but in theory, won't harm our elementary school students. In theory is in the proposal. Studies indicate that starting school later is beneficial for the academic performance and health of teenagers, while theory suggests that elementary students should not be adversely affected by an earlier start time. Should not be adversely affected. Okay. We're going to sacrifice our younger kids for the older kids in the standardized tests that the younger kids won't be able to pass in the future because we sacrificed them for the older kids. Now, let me tell you about my situation. I'm a working mother of two children. My six-year-old is currently a car rider first grader at FBE. We have a two-year-old who stays at home. My husband works 24-hour shifts in public safety field as a firefighter, paramedic, and I also do, too. The way it works in our home is that he gets off work at 6:00 AM, gets him home at 7:00. Time for him to get a shower, get ready for the day before the kids are up, which would drastically change if this time changes. He gets our six-year-old up around 7:30, and then gets the two-year-old up, gets him ready to go to school. Two-year-old is not, is an excellent sleeper, which I adore, and he has, she gets very grumpy if she gets up early. I, on the other hand, work four weekdays a week. I get home at 7:00 PM, and if I am home and my husband is at work, I am a solo parent for those two hours, struggling to get them to bed in time. It's really hard to get them to bed by 9:00 or 9:30, honestly. So in our house, getting them to bed earlier... So in our house, getting them to bed earlier is just not really that easy, and another hour will drastically change. This will be hard on working families, it'll suffer the time with our kids. My daughter is a young first grader, she has some focus issues we're constantly working on, we're trying to get her to bed, it's just not always that easy. This will affect her negatively as well as her sister. There are studies that suggest that this will actually hamper the elementary kids just as much as it hampers the adults, or the secondary. You're responsible for the sustainability of the learning environment, and to do that on incomplete data and theories is irresponsible. I applaud your attempts to try and make the learning environment better suited for the secondary students, but not, I repeat, not at the sacrifice of elementary kids. This change won't work in every system. If it won't work for everybody to go to school at the same time, then it doesn't need to happen. We need to err on the best for all, not just blatantly ignore one side of research while supporting another to create a larger problem and domino effect in the long run. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. How are we looking on time? I'm sorry? Do we have three minutes? Okay. We'll go through the next speaker, Harley, Harley Stevers, and then we will take a short recess to make a decision on extending time.
Hi, my name is Harley Stevers, and I live at nine thirty-six Walton Road in Christiansburg, Virginia. I am currently a student at AES in the fall. I will be a student at AMS. I say no to the change because I am concern, considered about safety and health issues. I am one of the students with health issues. If the time changes, I will continue to miss more school due to the scheduling of the doctor appointments. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, we've come to the end of thirty minutes. Do we have a motion to extend our public address time?
Make a motion that we do that.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor of extending the, I'm sorry?
How many more do we have who are signed up?
We have about sixteen, seventeen.
And how many do we have that have not signed up that may want to speak?
Are there any members in the audience who would, who have not signed up who are hoping that they will speak at the end? Just show by raise of hand. Anyone? Okay. I don't see any hands, so that means we would have about seventeen more speakers, sixteen more speakers. Okay. Do we want to, what, what is the motion again? Just to extend time to allow all of those speakers, or do we want to extend it for thirty minutes? What's the motion?
I'll make the motion, then we extend it to hear all of them.
Okay.
A second then.
A second that. Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we will extend public address to hear these final sixteen, maybe seventeen, my math is not very good. All right. Next on the list is Sam Smith, and after Sam Smith will be Dustin Long.
Good evening, Mrs. Blackburn and members of the board. My name is Sam Smith, and I currently live at two thirty-three Lester Place in Christiansburg. I come to you tonight to speak about these school start time changes, and I'm here to give you the perspective of a high school student who is against these changes. I know what it is like to be the typical teenager staying up on their cell phones or playing their video games up to the late hours of the night, among other things. This is what most, maybe not all, but most teenagers will be doing at night, staying up on their cell phones, playing their video games, talking to their friends. In my personal opinion, giving the extra hour in the morning is not going to make a difference apparently on that, because most teenagers are probably going to stay up anyways. I don't think that the extra hour is going to make a difference at all. Most teenagers, especially the ones that I've talked to, look at this change as an extra hour to stay up or an extra hour to sleep longer. They don't see this as a benefit. And I don't see this as a benefit either. If the time change is supposed to help us teenagers, is there anything that we can do to prevent those teenagers from staying up or sleeping longer? I don't think it's going to make a difference. I've thought also quite a bit about the school bus pickup timing. It is estimated that elementary-level students will be picked up starting around seven AM. At, an estimate, this puts the parents and the students getting up between five to six in the morning to get ready, to be dressed, to eat breakfast, and to be out to catch the bus in the morning. There are also the parents and students who live on the outskirts of the county, which means the bus pickups will be, uh, backed up even earlier than seven AM in some cases. That fact alone to me is very appalling and unreasonable. My last point is the childcare and the monetary effects it will have on parents, students, and the rest of their families. Under the current times, the secondary-level students will be home between three to three twenty-five, elementary between three fifty to four thirty. Excuse me. For the, for, for the families with a secondary-level student, this currently works. This gives time to where the secondary-level student will be able, will be able to give after-school daycare, and will, the parents will not have to pay a daycare or another childcare center in the morning or in the afternoon, because they have the upper-level student to be able to be responsible enough to take care of the younger sibling. With the new times, they will probably, the elementary will probably be home between two fifty to three thirty, uh, secondary between four to four thirty. This puts the elementary-level students home by themselves for at least an hour, if not longer, and if not longer is based on where the families live. Students between four to ten years old who are in elementary school probably cannot take care of themselves for an hour or longer, and they need the extra childcare. I don't believe that this time change should be made specifically for that. Thank you for your time.
Next is Dustin Long, and after Dustin Long is Lauren Hand. So next is Lauren Hand, and after Lauren Hand is Laura Rudisal.
My name is Lauren Hand. I live at eleven twenty-nine Cross Creek Drive in Christiansburg. Good evening, members of the Montgomery County School Board. As a resident of Christiansburg for the past thirty years, I have seen many changes within the school system. I was in second grade when my mother began driving a school bus for the county. I had to get up and get on the bus when she did every morning at six-thirty. I can tell you from experience that it was very hard to be that young and on the bus that early in the morning. At the beginning of two thousand sixteen, my husband and I will have a fourth grader and a kindergartner. I am self-employed and work from home and schedule client appointments around my children's school schedule. Currently, that allows me the working hours of nine fifteen to three forty-five, and being commission-based, I only bring in money when I work. I am blessed to be able to do this for now, but with the time change, my workday will be cut short, causing potential loss in income. If we were to have to put our children in an after-school program, again, we would be losing money by paying for someone else to keep them instead of them coming straight home. Another reason that I am very much against the time change is because of homework and extracurricular activities. My oldest son currently is in second grade and does participate in extracurricular activities such as football soccer, and he is on the Christiansburg Elite Wrestling Team. These are things that help him work off all of his excess energy and have helped to teach him discipline, respect, and focus. When he comes home, he spends thirty minutes to an hour on homework, sometimes longer, and then goes to practice on most nights. Many nights, we don't eat dinner until after practice at seven-thirty or eight, then baths and usually bed. If he must get up earlier, he will have to go to bed earlier, giving him no time to be a kid. I know that some of you may think that putting him in sports at such a young age may not be a good idea and that the sports are taking away from him being a kid, but I disagree. Keeping children active lowers their chances of sitting on the couch constantly, on their electronics, and gaining weight amongst other things. As they age, it keeps them out of trouble as well. On a different note, when my children do get to high school, I would much prefer them to get to the school earlier. Starting their day early helps to prepare them for life after high school, whether it be an eight o'clock college class or an eight o'clock workday. Also allowing them to get home earlier gives them added responsibilities, which also prepares them for life after high school. Whether the added responsibilities are taking care of younger kids once they get home or getting to an after-school job in order to earn money, um, or sports, these things are very important. There are more reasons that I could add, but these are the things that I feel the strongest about. As I stated at the beginning, I've lived in Christiansburg for thirty years. I grew up on the current school schedule as do many of the men and women here tonight. I was not obese in high school, and I was always on the AB honor roll at least. I respectfully ask that you please consider changing your minds to vote against the time change. I appreciate your time and for allowing me a chance to speak.
Thank you. Next is Laura Rudisal, and after Laura Rudisal is Rhonda Dean.
My name is Laura Rudisal. I live at forty-nine eighteen McCray Road, Blacksburg, Virginia, and I'm twelve years old. I would like to talk to you today, today about school start times. It is not safe that little kids will need to catch the bus in the dark and get off the bus when parents are not home, especially when there are evil people in the area. The safety of the student should come first. The times are being changed to help middle and high school students, but how will this help me and others like me whose parents work and need to be at work by eight o'clock? I will still be getting up at the same time. Please reconsider your decision for the safety of the younger children and not for money or SOLs. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Rhonda Dean, and after Rhonda Dean is April Amadeo.
My name is Rhonda Dean, and I live at six hundred Taluk Boulevard in Christiansburg. I appreciate giving, being given the time to speak with you tonight. I come here to give you a face and to tell you about the adverse effects that this time change will have on my family. I'm a single mom with two children. I never planned on being a single mom, but circumstances have changed, and that's where I find myself now. I currently work in a public school system in a neighboring county, which requires me to leave early in the morning to go to work. When the two thousand sixteen school year rolls around, I will have a tenth grader at Christiansburg High School, and I will have a fourth grader at Christiansburg Elementary School. When I leave to go to work in two thousand sixteen, I will be leaving my, um, then fifteen-year-old son at home and trust that he is going to get on the bus and go to school. I'm very realistic that even though I have a good child who makes good decisions most of the time, that temptation is going to be there for him to not go to school, and then I have to worry about that constantly. The other thing that happens at my house is that my son is my after, after-school childcare provider. No, it is not the best circumstance, but last year I made less than thirty thousand dollars, and if I am forced to put my daughter in after-school childcare, that takes away two hundred and fifty dollars from my monthly budget. I know that doesn't sound like a whole lot, but in my household, it makes a lot of difference on a day-to-day basis. The last thing that strongly affects my family is that my son plays lacrosse for the New River Valley Lacrosse League, which is a club sport, it is not school-sponsored. Many of their games are away, and they're required to travel out of the area. Being a single parent, my daughter is required to travel to those events with me. Lots of times when we have to travel out of the area, we do not return home until ten or eleven o'clock. That puts her going to bed at that time and then getting up early the next morning. I ask you to really think about the decisions and the effects that it is going to have on families, our time together, and our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is April Amadeo, and after April is Laura Roberts.
Good evening, my name is April Amadeo. I live at four oh three Pleasant View Circle. I have eight children, three are at the Blacksburg High School, and two are elementary school students. I'm here to ask you to reconsider the early start time, and I am here to share imperative research with you. The data presented to you is far from complete, and it only takes into account whether or not young children have an easier time going to sleep, and whether or not teenagers get enough sleep. No research was presented on the educational, psychological, or socio-emotional effects of early start times on elementary children, nor did the committee present studies on the impact of spending longer amounts of time in after-care programs. My husband will speak to you about the after-care aspect, and my daughter will also talk to you about the results of your surveys. I want to address the impact of early start times on elementary school students' performance. I referenced a study called "Earlier Start Times as a Risk Factor for Poor School Performance", and I brought a copy for each of you. This was conducted by the University of Kentucky, and it was published in the APA in June of two thousand fourteen. This is very recent research. It was also published in two thousand fifteen, a couple of months ago, in the Journal of Educational Psychology. I think you would agree that these are highly reputable research journal, journals. The research was extensive. They studied over seven, seven hundred and eighteen public elementary schools across the entire state of Kentucky. They examined the students' academic performance, and it was measured by looking at their reading, math, science, social studies, and writing scores. They also looked at attendance rates, grade retention, and student-teacher ratios. The results showed that earlier start times before eight-twenty-nine AM is related to lower school performances, especially for middle-class and affluent students. I want you to think about that. The early start times led to poor, poor academic performance, possibly by causing sleep deprivation. The researchers were surprised by their results, and they were surprised to discover that the greatest negative impact was on middle and affluent students. I quote, "Findings clearly show that at least for middle and upper-class students, the earlier start times can be associated with poor school performance in elementary school." The implication is that research on start school times should not focus exclusively on adolescents and teenagers. A particular concern to the researchers is the growing public support for delaying middle and high school start times, which is often at the expense of making elementary school times start earlier. This is done in order to preserve staggered bus scheduling. This findings suggest that policy changings are simply shifting the problem from adolescents to younger children instead of eliminating the problem. This is exactly what Montgomery County is proposing to do. You are robbing Peter to pay Paul, and you are setting up the youngest of our students for future problems. This study is the most expansive to date. Most research, including the research that you were presented with, only covers a single district. This covered the entire state of Kentucky. The researchers studied every single public elementary school in the entire state. They found other unexpected problems, including but not limited to poor test scores in elementary schools, lower class, uh, lower school ranking.
Your time is up, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Next is Laura Roberts, and after Laura Roberts is Dennis Smith.
Hi, my name is Laura Roberts. I live at forty-three fifty-five Wayside Drive, Christiansburg. I'm here today because I currently have children that will be affected by this time change. I'm against the changes that have been set forth to take place, and I'm here today to ask the board to reconsider the change. The changes that are being made are supposedly based on data collected by surveys, parents, teachers, staff. However, based on the survey results, the majority were not for this time change. Data from the survey showed that the majority of the students' parents and staff asked, um, to keep the current time in regards to the secondary school schedule. For me, I have a job at a certain time, so regardless of a changed school start time, my child will still have to wake up at a certain time. Just because the school time is set to be later does not mean that my child will get to sleep longer. I'd like to ask everyone in this room, including you as board members who have a job, if you could raise your hand if you have to be at your job before nine AM. Do you have to be at work before nine AM? So it's unrealistic to think that you have no childcare before school in the middle school age, but yet by the number of hands that are seen within this room, I have to be at work before school starts. Currently, elementary school has a before-and-after-school program in order to meet the needs for parents. Moving on to middle school, this is not the case. They only have after-school care. Based on the data collected, twenty-seven percent of students are car riders in the morning, meaning they are dropped off. That is over a quarter of the student population that will be affected by this time change in regards to AM care needs. For my family, we will be affected by this change. The options that we have already started to look at based off this is that we will have to find a new house in order to move into before my child starts middle school in order to find the appropriate bus route that meets our needs. If we can't do that, we will have to try to find a higher, uh, a private sitter that can take my child to school, and I'm sorry, the, the world that we live in today, that's not easy to find. If we do end up finding a new house where my child can then catch the bus, I will be forced to let my child stay at home unsupervised at an earlier age than I feel comfortable doing so in order for me to keep my job. And then, if I'm unable to do all of the above, I will then be forced to either have to find a new job for my hours that can be arranged around the school start times, or be forced to take, to have to place my child in be forced to take, to have to place my child in a different school system because for my, for us, my child is a transfer student. I know that you will never be able to meet the needs and requests of every parent in Montgomery County. However, it seems to me that when the majority of the parents are speaking out and saying this will not work for our family, who is this really benefiting from for this change? For me and my family, not only will this affect me and my job, it will possibly have to force my child into going into another school away from his friends that he's made over the last several years, which doesn't really seem fair when this change is supposedly set in order to help him. My story is only one of many, and I ask that you could reconsider this change as it will impact, as the impact that it will have on families will be significant.
Thank you. Next is Dennis Smith, and after Dennis Smith is LeAnn Henderson.
Dennis Smith, forty-nine eleven McCoy Road. That's in Long Shop area. I give the lady a copy of elementary students' sleep habits and teacher observations of sleep-related problems for you to read. I encourage each of you to read this information. I have an elementary-age child with special needs. He currently misses approximately two and a half hours of school per week for much-needed private therapy. This schedule has been in place for over four years now. Under the new change in the school start times, he will be missing at least five hours of school per week. As with many special-needs children, they rely heavily on a routine. Disrupting this established routine will be challenging. For instance, adjusting to the time change in the spring is particularly difficult as an hour of sleep is already lost. Having the sleep that he needs allows him to perform at the level that is expected. In a two thousand and five article, Elementary Students' Sleep Habits and Teacher Observations of Sleep-Related Habits, the authors report that, I quote, "Elementary school-aged children require an average of ten to eleven hours of sleep per night," unquote. Ms. Blackburn stated that bus pickup time for elementary school children will begin at seven AM. If you allow an hour for elementary children to get ready, they will need to be in bed at seven PM to ensure that they get eleven hours of sleep. In the school start times presentation dated April seventh, it was reported that, I quote, "Elementary students typically fall asleep earlier and wake earlier," unquote. The authors surveyed fifth graders to indicate who determined a bedtime and the times children went to bed and got up. Eighty-one percent stated that their bedtime was set by the parents. That's by the parents. When asked when they go to bed, fifty-five point three percent responded either nine PM or nine-thirty. When asked when they get up, it, forty-three percent responded, responded seven AM or later. Since the majority of fifth graders said they go to bed at nine PM or nine-thirty and wake up at seven or later, they are getting about ten hours of sleep. Changing the elementary school time to eight AM would decrease the number of hours of sleep that these children would be getting if the normal bedtime is maintained. As a parent, I am capable of determining my children, when my children should go to bed and not the Montgomery County School Board and Administration. One last thing. My wife found hundreds of articles on sleep-related research with elementary school early start times today. It was a matter, she said, five minutes. I encourage y'all to relook at that.
Thank you. Next is LeAnn Henderson, and after LeAnn Henderson is Alex Henderson.
Alex Henderson won't be here tonight. My name's LeAnn Henderson. I live at five seven five Liberty Via in Christiansburg. I'm a probation officer, probation and parole officer in this county. I have done so for fifteen years. Prior to that, I was a Child Protective Services worker in this county. So I've got a lot of different perspectives. I'm a full-time, I'm a single parent, and that's a full-time single parent. I don't have help. I am a working-class person in this county, and I think the majority of us here, and the majority in this county, are working-class parents. So there are real issues here that need to be addressed, and I'm asking you to please rethink your vote and your decision on this matter. I wrote down the mission statement, according to Virginia Department of Education website. The mission of the Board of Education and Superintendent of Public Instruction and Cooperation with their partners is to develop policies and provide leadership that improve student achievement and prepare students to succeed in post-secondary education and the workplace. My son, that's the youngest, is fifteen. He's a sophomore at Christiansburg High School. He is an honor roll student. He's a football player. He is a wrestler. He is a singer. He is in the ensemble at Christiansburg High School. We have a lot of activities, and there sometimes isn't enough time in the day for those activities. He would like for me to express that making the school time start later in the day will take away from those evening activities, and it will be a hindrance. He also expressed the opinion that kids are just going to stay up later. If they're given an extra hour in the morning, they're going to stay up later. They have electronic devices. They game at night. They're on social media, and they're teenagers, and that's what they do. I also have a concern that in our county, especially with the working-class people with both parents usually working, children will have less FaceTime with their families, more FaceTime with caregivers outside of the home, and that's just wrong. I submit to you that they'll be better students and better educated if they do have that extra hour of FaceTime with their own families. Another concern is middle schoolers. Middle schoolers don't qualify for daycare for childcare after school. After age twelve, there is no childcare assistance, so that is a concern. Additionally, they will be expected to get themselves up and ready in the morning before school. So you're talking about twelve- and thirteen-year-olds being held responsible to get themselves to school. I have two sons. One is twenty-five, and one is fifteen, and I have, I would have big concerns if they were age twelve and thirteen, getting themselves off to school if I were not there and had to be at work, which I do every day. I, lastly, I would just like to say again to please reconsider this. I think it's a bad decision. I think this is more about money. We all know that in our country, there is a big push for higher SOL scores so that we could perhaps get more funding, and sometimes more funding is just not the answer. It's not in this situation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We okay with the time?
I lost internet connection.
I'm sorry.
I lost internet connection.
Okay, I'll keep time up here as well.
Okay, and I've got my stopwatch right.
Next on the list is Jennifer Hatcher, and after Jennifer Hatcher, Hatcher is Jason Simmons.
I'm Jennifer Hatcher. I live at one sixty-five Overhill Drive, Overhill Road in Christiansburg. I have six children in the Montgomery County School System, two at Christiansburg High, two at Christiansburg Middle, and two at Falling Branch, and I'm asking you tonight to rescind this vote, to change the school starting times. Overall, it's just not a good decision for the families of Montgomery County, as I think your own survey results showed. Secondary students who play on sports teams are going to have to miss instructional time now to leave for away games. Their after-school practices are going to be pushed back later, which pushes back homework starting time, which pushes back bedtime, and so they get the exact same amount of sleep, and it's going to essentially render the change completely useless. There's already been talk at the high school about sports teams changing their practice times to before school, again, making this change completely useless. And even the information on your own website suggests that though teenagers are not going to be available to help with childcare after school, they might be available to watch their younger siblings before school during that extra hour they're supposed to be sleeping. So again, that makes it completely useless. I think we've already discussed the negative impact on elementary students. By making this change, we're just changing one set of problems for another set of problems with different-aged children. Finally, the bulk of the research that is, I've been able to find about school start times, improving secondary education performance, is based on one study from Wake County, North Carolina. But I have found a multitude of studies that show that the highest factor of school performance is income level and poverty. The more students a school has that are impoverished, the lower their test scores are. Your own survey indicates that thirty-five percent of families who do not currently have children in after-school care are going to have to find money to put their kids in after-school care after this time change goes into effect. When I think about the large percentage of students at my son's school who are already on the free and reduced lunch program, I'm concerned that we're going to push families who are on the verge of poverty over the edge, and that we're going to make matters worse for families who are already struggling to pay their bills, and that is going to impact their children's performance at school. Again, the effect of school start time on secondary student performance was based on one study in one county. The effect of poverty on student performance has been proven again and again in study after study. This decision is not in the best interest of any students in this county, and it's certainly not in the best interest of the families of Montgomery County. And if the majority of parents, students, and teachers in Montgomery County don't want this, then who exactly are you representing?
I'm sorry, your time is up. Next is Jason Simmons. After Jason Simmons is Virginia Hunt.
Jason Simmons, two twelve Round Hill Drive, Christiansburg. And I want to be very clear, I oppose this time change. My comments are directed at the board members that voted in favor of it. You know, what you did is wrong, and we're all wrong sometimes. It happens to everybody, so just fix it. Just go back, do the vote tonight, and fix it tonight. I promise you won't have to see me again. My daughter is seven years old. She gets up at seven o'clock in the morning. I drop her off at school at eight-thirty-five. She gets off the bus at four-ten. She's able to come down to my office. We get off work five, five-thirty, like I'm sure most people do. The only thing the time change does is it's going to force her to get up at six. Six o'clock for a seven-year-old, maybe six-thirty. That's a long grind. That's a long day for a child, so I accuse you of stealing her childhood. You know, for a twelve-year-old, a thirteen-year-old, a fifteen-year-old, a teenager, you know, if you've got to grind it out, you've got to get up at six, five-thirty in the morning. Hey, that's life. But for a child that's young, a five-year-old, a six-year-old, you know, my daughter, you think she'd brush her teeth if I didn't tell her to? It's not that she doesn't want to brush her teeth. She's got so much stuff going on, she just doesn't remember to. You know, I have to pick out her clothes. Who knows what she would wear? I mean, today was pajama day, thank goodness, so I mean, what a lot of effort required there. But, you know, the other thing that bothers me too is that Brenda Drake sent me the research, and I did research for fifteen years, and I got to tell you, none of this is conclusive. I mean, you've got a study here, you know, of what, twenty-one hundred kids over in Switzerland? Another study in Israel? Have any of y'all been to Israel? I spent five days in Jerusalem on business several years ago. Let me tell you, it's not Montgomery County. It's a lot different over there. You know, some of these other studies are, you know, involve private schools, right? I mean, if I'm reading it correctly, I went through every one. I spent a half a day. You know, there's other studies that completely refute what you're trying to do. USA Today published an article by David Malmi, concluded that social-relational factors outperform developmental, developmental factors in determining youth's sleep patterns, pointed to the importance of parents, peers, and school ties in getting kids to sleep more. You know, we can all point to every study we want to. We can bring up facts, and we can refute those facts, but we're a community, and you're our school board, and it's your job to balance between what we want as parents, what's best for the children, and what's cost-effective. And so I think you see that as you represent us parents, that the majority is clearly against this change, and from what I gather, there's over thirteen thousand school districts in the United States. Twenty-one hundred, go early. You know, let's just put it off. There's no hurry to do this. Show me some hard evidence.
Thank you. Next is Virginia Hunt, and after Virginia Hunt is Crystal Noonie.
Good evening. My name is Virginia Hunt. I live at sixty-five Massey Drive, Christiansburg, Virginia. I'm very concerned for the safety, not only of my children, but for all elementary school children. This time change puts the youngest children out in the darkest and coolest times of the mornings during the school year. I'm not comfortable with my four-year-old being out waiting for the bus in the dark, regardless if I'm standing there with him or not. I also have an infant, which means that that infant would have to go with me and also be out in the temperatures while we wait for the bus. This time switch will mess up my children's sleep schedules. The National Sleep Foundation clearly states that elementary school-aged children need ten to eleven hours of sleep at night. Changing these times will require me to have my kids in bed by seven PM at the latest. This makes extracurricular activities next to impossible. My daughter could possibly have to stop taking gymnastics, and I ask you, is that fair to her? This time change, or this change in bedtime will also interfere with our church obligations during the week, which will leave my kids sleep-deprived for two nights of the week. I'm not willing to sacrifice my Christian values for a school board decision. Further damage will be on our own family as a unit, as this would mean in addition to the two evenings that my husband already misses out on time with my children, there will be another additional two nights a week that he will not see his children. That's four school nights that my children will not see their father, that he will not have any time with them, no homework time, nothing. He will say goodbye to them in the morning, and that is it. This will put us, having me be a single parent during the week. It's an extremely small amount of time for their kids, for kids to have with their daddy, and I don't think it's fair, and it's, yeah, all for what? So older children can get that extra hour of sleep in hopes that, what, this will improve their all-important SOL scores? How are you going to guarantee that the older kids are actually going to get this extra hour of sleep? Will you be policing every household to make sure kids are in bed on time? I don't, I don't know of any other way you're going to make sure that that hour is actually spent in the bed sleeping. And I don't think it's fair or appropriate to sacrifice my children's health and academics simply on the hopes that older kids will now sleep more and scores will be improved. I'd rather pull my kids and teach them at home myself. Where is our right and responsibility as parents to raise our kids to know right from wrong, to show them that for wrong decisions, there are consequences to them? That is my job as a parent, not a school board panel's. I'll leave you with the words of Ann Landers. It is not what you do for your children, but what you have taught them to do for themselves that will make them successful human beings. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Crystal Noonie. After Crystal Noonie is Philip Amadeo.
Can I move this down a little bit?
Sorry.
Can I move this down a little bit?
Yeah, that's fine.
My name is Crystal Noonie, and we live at twelve-thirty Flint Drive here in Christiansburg. I'm a mom to a three-year-old, a six-year-old, a stepmom to a twelve-year-old and a fifteen-year-old, and one on the way. The school time changes you all have approved will negatively affect my family, my entire family, not just the little ones. Our older children will learn that with enough defiance and lack of disciplined routine, they can manipulate situations to benefit themselves. I think we can all agree that teenagers are good enough at that as it is. I'm also concerned because this will not properly prepare our children for the adult world that we so equally expect them to succeed in. We expect them to ask permission for bathroom use, but yet we can't expect them to manage a schedule that's not going to be optional in the adult world. Where is the consistency that we so highly encourage parents to implement? This is my six-year-old Claire. She would like to share her thoughts on this, too. Okay, you remember how we talked about the school time changes? What are they changing them to?
We, we go to school earlier and we get out earlier.
Are you excited about this?
No.
Why not?
Because I'll have to be at the babysitters later.
Why else aren't you happy about this, Claire?
Because on soccer nights, I won't be able to get home in time because we stay there late, and I won't get enough sleep.
What time does your daddy normally get home from work?
Late, because he works two hours away.
Claire and my younger one are both children of a split home. If we change the school time, that's going to limit time that they get to spend with their father on weeknights, and it's already every other weekend, very minimal time. How often do I help out at your school?
Every morning at car riders and... Every morning at car riders and every activity.
Currently, my work schedule allows for me to be an active member of the PTA. I am there almost every day. As a small business owner, I can change my schedule, but then I'm not going to be active within the schools, and my kids are going to be at the daycare even longer. I think it's highly important for us as parents to be involved, not only with our school, but with the kids and their activities. This is definitely going to hinder, excuse me, hinder that. And we're going to rob our children of priceless moments of being involved and time with them. I strongly urge you all to reconsider the effects that the time changes would have on this community. And not only takes away the consistency and responsibilities our older children so critically need to survive in the adult world, but it takes time away from the families and puts them in more time with childcare. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Philip Amadeo. And after Philip Amadeo is, I think it's Jocelyn Amadeo.
Hi, my name's Philip Amadeo. I live at four-zero-three Pleasant View Circle, Blacksburg. I have eight children. Three attend the high school, two are in elementary school, and two have graduated. I think everything I was going to talk about tonight has been touched upon, about the burden you're about to place upon people in Montgomery County. It's a financial burden, it's an emotional burden, it separates the family. Family is most important, not economics. Everybody here has touched upon how this is a poor decision. And all it was, was a decision. It can be rescinded, it can be voted upon, it can be canned, and it should be. What you have already works. You can tweak it. You don't need to change the times. I've got two children who already graduated. One's in the Naval Academy, one has a full ride at Virginia Tech. She took trumpet with Mr. Pyramin, after-school activity. Got home late already. I've got a four and a six-year-old. I don't think there is much thought, given the fact there are many families here who have high schoolers and have siblings who are youngsters who are not in elementary This one hour, this hour doesn't exist. One hour to sleep is all it is. It's a switch at time. It's not going to work. I'd like you to spend a minute and thirteen seconds convincing me how one hour is going to change any score. It's not. There is a lack of affordable housing in Montgomery County already. You are putting a financial burden, an increased financial burden, upon the people of Montgomery County. They already struggle to find affordable housing. This is going to add to that. There's going to be a financial burning of childcare, which doesn't exist. There is no more childcare in Montgomery County. Talk to the IDA. Let's get, how are you going to bring in a company, employ more people in Montgomery County, and you tell them the start times? Your high schoolers go, and then there's nobody home to watch the kids. Two-family incomes. There's a lot more to be thought about here.
I'm sorry, your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Jocelyn Amadeo. And after Jocelyn is Laura Hopkins.
Hello, my name is Jocelyn Amadeo. I live at four-zero-three Pleasant View Circle, Blacksburg. I'm in ninth grade at Blacksburg High School. I'm here to ask you to reconsider the decision to place the start times at the high school. I took the survey at our high school. I feel that our voices as students were not heard. I was extremely surprised to hear the school times were going to change, and I'm not happy about this change. I am unhappy about this change because you are making it harder for high school students to participate in the after-school activities that are important to them, including marching band and sports. We will get home much later, and this will interfere with dinnertime and homework time. After one o'clock, it is very hard for most of us to concentrate. We just want to get out of school by then. We don't want to be in a classroom. The later the day goes, the harder it is to concentrate, and we are very tired. I believe that our teachers will give us the same amount of homework. I normally have at least an hour of homework. My sister in AP classes has at least three hours every single day. We will have to do that homework, which will make us stay up later than we already have to stay up. I don't think any of us will get more sleep than we already do because we still have the same amount of homework. Right now, my sister and I get home from marching band around five to five-thirty. If you move this time, we won't get back until after six. My friends, who have to go to away games, such as football, track, and basketball, will have to miss even more class time than they already miss. The surveys we took showed you the following information. Over three thousand five hundred students answered the surveys. The majority of fifty-four percent of students said that high school starts at the exact right time. Ninety-four percent of us reported that we go to bed already before eleven PM on school nights. Thirty-four point five percent of us told you that we help provide after-school childcare to our younger siblings. Thirty-three percent of us told you that a later start time would impact their work schedules. Please listen to us, the students, and do not make this time change. Finally, if you make this change, I will lose my job as a pet sitter because those dogs have to be taken before I will get home. And they will have to be taken when I'm still at school. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Laura Hopkins. And after Laura Hopkins, if John Neal is here, we will hear from him.
I believe she had to leave.
Okay. So last will be John Neal. Is John Neal here?
Madam Superintendent, Chairman of the Board, members of the board, I appreciate your time this evening. I apologize for the way I'm dressed. I was on the opposite side of the field from Ms. Noonie just a few minutes ago. And so I only had time to come like I am, but I apologize for that. I'm not here as the father of a six-year-old at Christiansburg Primary School, who, I think it's Teacher Appreciation Week. She has had two of the best teachers I've ever met in kindergarten and first grade, so thank you for that. I'm also not here as the owner of an engineering firm that has a total of nineteen kids between our twenty employees, ranging from kindergarten all the way up through, I think, a senior in high school. I'm also not here as the owner of a childcare center that stands to benefit from the change that was approved. And the reason I'm not here is all those things, is because I am trying to think about this thing as an engineer, as a rational person, as a logical person. So if we do that, and I heard a quote from a board member about this not being a personal issue, so I'm trying to do that. I'm trying to think about it logically and rationally. And when I think about that, I say, let's assume that the biology and the studies and all those things are correct, and that it is better for the secondary students to start at the later time. Let's set that aside and assume that that's okay, and we're going to accept that. My question as a rational, logical person is, does that benefit outweigh the costs that we know exist, specifically and foremost, that kids from kindergarten through twelve years old will get to spend less time with their families? And that's a time when those kids, fortunately, more so than teenagers, want to spend time with their parents versus being in a childcare center. My daughter wants to spend time with me. I'm going personal now, sorry, I apologize for that. But my daughter and other kids, other six-year-old kids, they want to spend time with their families. They want to be with their mom and their dad. This change will specifically take some of that away. How much? Nobody can say, but you cannot deny that it will take some of that time away. I've only got fifty-six seconds left. They will go to bed earlier. That specifically takes time from the other side of the equation away from them. Over seventy-five percent of the parent respondents said that the elementary school time is just right. I also did some studying as a logical person on the specifics for 2015, and I know it's not being implemented then. The sun does not rise, starts rising after seven AM, starting on September eleventh of 2015, until October thirty-first. Then we get daylight savings time, and you get fifteen days where the sun rises after seven AM. Then after November fifteenth, it does not rise again before seven AM until February twenty-fourth. That is a specific safety issue for children that are catching the bus, whether their parents are watching them or not. And I'm telling you here, my daughter's going to be okay, but I have a specific concern about a lot of kids in our school system that are at risk and may not have the opportunity for that.
Sorry, your time is up. Thank you. That concludes our public address time tonight. Thank you for those who spoke. We will now move on to the rest of our agenda. Next up is consent items, board members. Do you have anything to pull from consent? If not, we will consider consent items approved. Next up is the personnel report. May I have a motion to accept the personnel report as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I would, Mr. Lyons. By your action this evening, you have appointed Dominique Sayah as the principal of Prices Fork Elementary School effective-
Excuse me, we haven't taken any action.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
We haven't taken any action.
Okay. I'll wait and do it after you vote. How about that?
We just made the motion.
We made the motion.
Right, we haven't acted.
Right. That's correct. All right, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, now we can say it.
All right, now by your action this evening, you have appointed Dominique Sayah as the principal of Prices Fork Elementary School, effective July one, two thousand and fifteen. Mr. Sayah holds certification as an elementary teacher and has master's degrees in both counseling and educational leadership. Dominique is currently the AP at Auburn Elementary School, a position that he has held for the last four years. Prior to becoming the assistant principal at Auburn, he served as an elementary teacher and a school improvement coach in a neighboring county. Please join me in congratulating Mr. Sayah. Dominique, I know you're out there, so stand up so we can see you.
Congratulations from the board. Thank you for your service. Next up is the payment of the bills. May I have a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of paying the bills, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bills have been paid. Next on the agenda is superintendent's reports, recommendations, and announcements. I turn it over now to Mrs. Blackburn.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. Our first item this evening is a presentation on the e-Backpack Initiative, which has been going on in our four high schools this year. It's a great pleasure to provide the board with this progress update. You will remember that some funding solutions for this implementation took us a little while, in fact, going into September of two thousand and fourteen. Therefore, we have had just a one-semester experience with our one-to-one initiative. Even though it's been short, it has been a very exciting time and a very exciting experience. Tonight, Harvey Goodwin, Jennifer Weaver, Julie Kraft, and Kevin Sears will share some comments with you in person, and a number of our students and teachers will join you via video. Harvey, I think you're first.
Thank you.
Ms. Blackburn, Mr. Lyons, members of the board, it's my pleasure to introduce part of the team who have been working on e-Backpack Initiative for Montgomery County Public Schools. Tonight, you will hear from Jennifer Weaver, Julie Kraft, and Kevin Sears, who will be reporting on the wonderful success that this project has become. These individuals represent but a fraction of the team that has been working on this project over the last year. Ninth-grade teachers, instructional technology resource teachers, administrators, parents, technicians, have all been working hard to get us where we are today. It has been hard work, but I am sure we would all agree that it has been good work and work well done. Towards the end of the presentation, you will view a video with testimony to this fact by many of the stakeholders. Eddie Miller and I have done, as many of you know, many videos over the years, and this has been one of the hardest. There is a rule that for every one minute of film that you produce, there are twenty minutes that are left on the cutting room floor. The film was hard for this very reason. We had so much additionally that we would have loved to have shared with you tonight.
As you know, the focus of our professional development work with the high school teachers is focused on engagement. The e-Learning Backpack Initiative has served as a wonderful opportunity to provide teachers with support in reaching this goal. It's given us a variety of opportunities that teachers wouldn't have had access to in the past. As you watch the video, you'll notice teachers participating in learning new strategies, such as ways to increase response rates, to have students working on higher-level engagement strategies. You'll see them implementing them in their classroom, and you'll see the impact that has been seen by students and parents.
Moving from a BYOD environment to a one-to-one initiative changes the way teachers plan their lessons. Knowing what devices students will bring with them to class allows teachers to incorporate electronic resources uniformly and develop engaging lessons. Principals and teachers help develop this list of instructional goals that they hope to accomplish with the addition of tablets for ninth-grade students. ITRTs provided e-Learning Backpack cohort teachers with a variety of professional development opportunities, including classroom management strategies for a one-to-one initiative, how to use tablets daily as a learning and organizational tool, how to incorporate video creation with the tablet, and how to leverage Google Classroom. The launch of Google Classroom has helped to accomplish many of these goals, including effective content delivery, as well as online choices for note-taking, activities, and homework completion. Web-based resources like online textbooks, iXL, and Read180 are easily accessible on the tablets. Teachers use games like Kahoot that allow students to participate, increase response rates, and provide instant feedback, all while the kids are having fun. We'd like for you to see some examples.
After funding for the e-Learning Backpack Initiative was approved, the Tablet Selection Committee chose the Dell Venue Eleven. Ninth-grade teachers were issued their own tablets, and Instructional Technology Resource teachers began providing professional development. Teachers assessed the software to be installed on the student tablets. Eight-hundred-and-sixty-two tablets were ordered, delivered, and configured. Principals and ITRTs planned and held parent meetings at each of the four high schools. Internet safety, cyber ethics, parental responsibilities, and student responsibilities were discussed. ITRTs collaborated with media specialists and school principals to plan for distribution in each school. Students were issued their tablets, and ITRTs trained them on the responsibilities and effective use of technology. Like a textbook, students use their tablets at school each day and take them home each night. Professional development in both small and large groups is ongoing at the four high schools. Teachers work to create engaging lessons that integrate student tablets and MCPS electronic
We put on some of the readings that we're doing in my English class that are accessible on the tablets, so they don't have to take their English textbook home. All they do is take their tablet. The questions are there, the text is there that they can access at any time. And if a student has- And if a student has missed that day, the agenda is posted in Google Classroom. As they're homesick, even the day of their absence, they can still do the assignments that we were doing in class, and they can return to class caught up. I've had two students on homebound, and we've connected through Google Classroom for their assignments. They don't have to come physically to the school to pick up assignments. They're all there for them on their tablets in real time, with links to any videos, with links to any notes we might go over, and those things become a reference tool for them later for future assignments. It's been outstanding.
Students seem to be a lot more invested in what we do in the activities in class, as well as having that access to technology at home. I notice that they come in with their homework a lot more often, and even if they're able to, you know, maybe they don't have internet at home, they can type up their assignments. They can bring them back into school the next day and post those on, you know, things like Classroom, or email them to me, or to each other, when they have that Wi-Fi connection. And so I find that students are more willing to get their work done and participate in the activities, whereas before, you know, we had zeros in the gradebook, and those things are filling up now.
Google Drive and access to Google Drive through the tablets has really helped students to receive and send materials easier, and it also allows them greater communication capabilities with me. My students feel free to email me at any time, which is great because that's the quickest way that I can get back to them.
Now all of a sudden, I pop things up virtually. It's there. I'm not standing in the copy room for 40 minutes wasting that time. I have more time to, you know, work on assignments, not only planning.
I feel like their performance and achievement is increasing, and I hope to really tell that, especially down towards the end of the semester, and try to compare it with past semesters where we really didn't have that technology beforehand.
You know, maybe even if I'm in the car, like going somewhere, you know, I play sports, so it's really nice to be able to type up essays and whatnot for class when I'm on the go. And it's good for, I like it when we get to turn in assignments online, because it's just there, and you don't have to keep track of books and papers, and you can just turn it all in. So that's, yeah, that's what I use my tablet for. Yeah, I look up stuff, you know.
Having a tablet that you can use is better for me, I think, because like you can take it home and do all your work. So say if you don't finish it, it's not like you're gonna have to start all over. You can just save it on like Google Docs or Google Drive, and then you can finish it when you get home.
It helps with the homework, because I don't have internet at home. So having it with me helps, like, keep my stuff organized and helps me remember that I have homework and helps me sometimes to do it.
The tablet making me more organized, I think, is like when I use my notes, I can actually go through and look up what I need, and it's very organized on the tablet as well as me putting them where I need them to go.
Like, there's been days where I've been sick and I haven't been there, but the teachers have still posted the work on Google Classroom, so I can still go and like participate in like the class chats and everything on there and catch up on my work and easy. So it helps me keep up my grades too, because I don't have to worry about all the makeup work as much.
If you can take a video of the teacher giving a lecture, it's nice to go home and be able to watch over that again. So yeah, I'd say that it has, in a positive way, helped change the way I learn, so, yeah.
Parent of a student at Blacksburg High School, and I just have been really impressed with how my daughter loves having her own device. I walk by her room and I see her working on it all the time, and she said, "Mom, I love this. It's like I have my own personal computer." And I mean, she is working in so many different classes, doing so many different assignments. I'm just so impressed, and, you know, she seems excited about the opportunity to use this. It's really been a wonderful asset for our family.
The look on some of these students' faces, when you hand them a brand-new tablet, and it might be their first new piece of electronic that they've ever received.
They come in, you see them using them in the mornings.
Yes, I use my tablet for homework all the time.
But the assessment result is what's so important, the immediate feedback.
The tablets have actually given me instructional minutes back.
I would definitely say it's changing the way we learn.
And we talk about students first, and this is putting students first.
I think it'd be really nice to have my tablet for the rest of my high school career. Yeah, it's, it'd be good.
I feel like let's keep it going. Let's keep it going.
Ms. Blackburn, members of the board, good evening. At Christiansburg High School, we are extremely happy with the introduction of the tablet program and excited about the possibilities of continuing it next year. Through personal observations, conversations with students, conversations with teach, and conversations with teachers, I have found the following to be true regarding the e-Learning program. In the mornings, we have approximately 20 students with their tablets out, working on completing homework assignments, finishing projects, and sharing information with other students. Tablets are being used every day in freshman history classes to complete warm-up activities and take notes. Tablets are being used daily in algebra readiness and Algebra I classes for students to complete assessment activities and practice programs that develop and reinforce math skills. Tablets are being used in English classes for all of these reasons, as well as conducting research and submitting papers. The tablets allow students to participate in electronic multiple-response activities, such as Kahoot and Poll Everywhere, whereas before, only students with cellphones could participate. Other students were, had to stand out by writing it on a piece of paper and holding it up, or on a white erase board and holding it up. Students greatly appreciate the fact that tablets allow them to complete assignments at home and submit them electronically. Many did not previously have access to a device outside of school, and also had, and many had to share one home computer with siblings and parents. And why is the program important for Christiansburg High School, as well as the other high schools in the county? Like most schools with high percentages of students who receive free or reduced lunches, many of our students did not have access to electronic devices for use in classroom or at home. This program has greatly leveled the playing field in that respect. Most of our school computers are located in and above the library. This means that our library is closed, for all intents and purposes, for four to five weeks each semester for benchmark and SOL testing. The tablets allow students to continue work doing research in their classrooms and complete other activities that previously could only be done in the library. Beginning with the graduating class of 2017, all students must complete an online course as a graduation requirement. Having the tablets allows us much more flexibility to ensure students are able to meet this requirement. Finally, and most importantly, our students are wired to learn using electronic devices. Anybody who's recently eaten dinner with a teenager can attest that they can instantly focus on 140 characters coming through their phone with the urgency of responding to a five-alarm fire while ignoring your third request to pass the potatoes. If we truly want to reach our students in a meaningful way, we have to meet them where they live, and currently they are living online. Thank you for supporting this program. We have a teacher on hand, Mr. Brian Porter, a social studies teacher who has done a great job of implementing the e-Backpack Initiative in his classrooms. If you have specific questions about how the devices are used, or otherwise, any of the members who presented here today would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Board members, any questions? Any comments you'd like to make?
I was curious, can they be used for SOL testing, the tablets?
Not at this point, I believe, Julie, if you'll come up and speak to that.
This year, they're not, we're not planning to use them for SOL testing, but is it possible? Sure. Seems like that would be really helpful. Yeah. The way that they were configured is like a standard laptop, so the screen is really small, so it's probably, I don't know, we'd have to do some research and try to find out if that's the best idea to use those for SOL testing, but technically, is it possible? Sure.
Do they do practice test on it?
Yes, absolutely, and the ITRT at Christiansburg High School has worked with a couple of classrooms of students just to test, to see if the students could use the devices, if they were practical, and he found out that they could. The kids would prefer to use larger machines. Yeah.
Is there any way that we could work through the advanced classes that have, I know my daughter's a freshman, and she has one, but she's in a lot of the advanced classes that two or three of the freshmen are in, and they can't use the tablets because the rest of the, you know, class doesn't have them. I know there's some, a set in the library. Is that something that after a certain amount of time, they could check those out? Because I know they leave them open for children that might have forgotten theirs, if a teacher needed an extra one, or something like that. But I know one of the teachers that I was talking to at a conference was saying it would be great to be able to pull up data for the whole class, you know. Is there some, you know, help me understand that.
There are laptop cards available for teachers to check out to use in their classrooms to supplement, and if, if we continue getting tablets or electronic devices for students, theoretically, next year, half of the students at Christiansburg High School would have devices in their hands, so that frees up the laptop cards for the teachers to use to supplement other classes. And the tablets that are in the library are loners, so that if a student were to break their device, or if it were not working on a particular day, they can turn theirs in, get it put, sent out for repair, and borrow one of the loners. Yeah.
Any other questions? I just had one, a couple actually. My assumption is we're not going to allow the students, the freshmen, to keep these over the summers. Is that correct?
Right, they'll be turned in at the end of the school year, just like the students turn in their textbooks, so that we can bring them back for maintenance and updates and get them ready for next year.
So will they be issued the exact same device that they had before?
They will.
Okay.
That's the plan.
Okay. Only other comment I had is, doing 800 of those at a time, did you get carpal tunnel? Do we need to up your health insurance for any reason?
Actually, you know what? We had a fantastic team working on it. Everybody pulled together, worked really hard, and I feel like the deployment was very successful. I'm very proud of our team.
Thank you.
I was impressed with just how much progress they made in just a semester, if you think about the fact that they were only issued in January. So this year, if our budget holds, as we go into the next agenda item, hopefully those will be ordered in the summer, and we'll be ready to kick off early in the school year next year and get the full year's experience in the second year. I'd like to thank all of the team for their work on the presentation for you all this evening. You can tell it was a labor of love. They have worked very, very hard to make this a successful experience for our Stevens. Thank you.
All right, the next action on the agenda is the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. Tonight you will see the 1516 operating budget. It reflects the discussions that the board had at your last workshop and at your last meeting in April. I'm gonna make my comments very brief, because we have been working on this for four and a half months now, so you've seen it a lot and heard a lot about it, and it's really been a work in progress. This evening, I'm recommending your approval of the budget that is presented. We've not been able to accomplish everything that we wanted to do, but we made great progress toward our goals. I appreciate the support that we received this year from the Board of Supervisors with basically a $2 million increase in funding for our public schools. And I appreciate the hard work of our staff and the board to bring us to the point that we are this evening. Our total available revenue is 100, 100 million, 500,755 dollars. And when we last met, the gap was between that and our 101 million, 809,009 dollar request. So over a period of four months, we went from a gap of 3.9 million dollars between the needs-based budget to just over 1.3 million dollars. There are some things in this budget that we were not able to fund. I do remain optimistic that the supervisors will perhaps provide us with some additional revenue as they look at their windfall-June revenue, as they also look at 1516 unencumbered funds that they may have, as they look at the opportunity to potentially provide us with some access to bond money, and also as we have our own carryover money that we may be able to do some things with. So what were we able to do? In consideration of that initial gap from 3 million dollars down to what you see this evening, we've been able to provide compensation improvement for eligible employees. We've been able to fund the e-Backpack for two, for year two, for all four of the high schools. We've been able to maintain the part-time benefit stipend that's been in place for some time for part-time employees. We've been able to provide health care for part-time employees who work 30 hours or more for us. We've been able to improve CTE program access. We've been able to cover the increased cost of employee-only health insurance. We've been able to expand our health care options to include a high deductible health care plan. We've been able to fund the governor's summer school program, the additional social worker and college application week by moving them from carryover year-end funding to actually being in our operating budget. And we've been able to provide for the purchase of four additional school buses, two from our usual allocation, and two additionals based on the last 156,000 dollar increase in funding from our supervisors. What were we not able to do? Have to look at both pieces. The things that we removed from the budget were the 150,000 dollars for 21st Century Classroom improvements. We reduced the bus funds by about a half. We reduced the funds for building repair and roof maintenance by 250,000 dollars. We reduced the 25,000 dollar match for a school security grant. We've not yet funded salary improvements for those employees who are at the top of the pay scale, but as we have discussed before, we believe that there will be a great opportunity for us to address these things that are not currently funded through our carryover fund. So this evening, it's been a long and intense budget session, but the budget presented this evening meets most of the expectation of the initial needs-based budget. Also, we did not cut a single employee across the division, and it has been some time since there have been no staff reductions, so it's quite an accomplishment. If you have questions or other ideas, please let me know, but I very proudly present this budget to you this evening and hope that you will approve it as presented.
Board members, do I have a motion to accept the budget as presented?
So moved.
Okay, any discussion or questions?
I would just like to say one thing. I would like to encourage the parents in the community to contact their state legislators to return funding to public education that has been taken away. Without, the Board of Supervisors have, has extremely been generous in filling some of the gaps, but they cannot continue to do this. With adequate funding, we could add teachers, add classes, extend our CTE and STEM programs, we could add backfield trips, and we could have enough buses and drivers to start all levels of school at the same time instead of a split schedule.
Last year was a very difficult budget for me. You know, I was just not happy with the way things were going, and for the last several years, watching our staff being cut, 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 has truly been painful for me. I've been here for a long time and worked very hard to build our school system up with programs and employees and benefits and just all kinds of things that make learning better for our children and a better experience for our families. So this year, not to have any employees cut, I just can't tell you what that means to me. The college application program, it may sound like that's, doesn't mean, doesn't seem like much, but sitting down with students and listening to them talk about the ability to put college applications into colleges where they never would have thought of before was huge to say, you know, I was able to, you know, apply here and to apply here because a fee of 300 dollars was not something that was accessible to them. That, that's a tremendous benefit that we're giving to our families in this county. So when folks comment about some of the things that are in our budget and they don't mean much, and that those should be cut, you know, sometimes those are things that are most important. Buses, I'm gonna say it again, when I got here, there were buses that were breaking down, being, children put on buses that were breaking down so that they could get to school. You know, we, we have to, have to purchase buses. And again, as Ms. Graham echoed, our supervisors have stepped up repeatedly over the last four years to help make us, help keep us going in this district. If we do not- If we do not force, I'm not saying ask them, force our state and our federal legislators to support public education, we are going to be in serious trouble. Because you as taxpayers, it's not the supervisors who are giving us this money, it's you as taxpayers. It's your tax dollars. And you can't keep, we can't keep putting that burden, burden on local government to do this. The federal government, the state government is supposed to provide this for our families and for our communities. I, I'll stop there because I could go on and on and on because I'm just very excited about the work that the superintendent has done and her staff on this budget this year because I was really not looking forward going into trying to find $4 million and how we were going to be able to sustain a school system that's going to be at its best. So again, thank you all.
I agree. I thank you so much, Ms. Blackburn and your staff, for finding, finding some money. And I just, I feel like we're lucky because I, like Ms. Franklin, $4 million, I didn't see that happening. But, and I'm very pleased, this is the first year that we haven't cut staff since I've been on the board. But I, I hope in the future years, we can add back some of this staff because I feel like our schools are suffering still from lots and lots of cuts in the staff. And in this budget, that's not being added back. I mean, there's great things in the budget that are being added, but that's not being added back. And I, I look forward to seeing that in the future.
I just have one quick question. If you could remind me, something that you made reference to that we have not put in the budget yet, the amount that it will take to do the one-time bonus for the top scale, what is that number?
It was around $100,000, a little bit over that.
Yeah. Just wanted, does that sound about right? Okay. Just wanted to make sure. I, I thought that's what it was, but just wanted to make sure that was clarified. Again, I'd like to express my thanks to Mrs. Blackburn, your staff. I think we did a great, great job with the budget this year with the potential shortfall that we were staring at. All the negotiation with the health insurance, all those things that we were, obviously have been put on us by different government agencies, we were able to meet all of those. And I thank you very much. I also would like to commend you for the, the new website for the budget. I thought that was very helpful for all of us and for the public to see what was going on. I like that amount of transparency and we want to continue down that vein as we move forward in the coming years, so. All right, with that said, we have the discussion, we have our motion and our second. Let's do a roll call on the budget, please.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Coran?
Yes.
Excuse me, I'm, I've got it. Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we have a budget.
That's wonderful, Nease. Again, thanks to staff for all the hard work and for the great amount of input that we got from our employees and from the citizens of Montgomery County as well. It took a lot to get to this point, so thank you. Next one is to approve our 2015-2016 school nutrition budget.
Okay, do I, do you need?
This budget does, it does include a 10 cent increase in the cost of student lunches. Do you want to reinforce that? And it is required that we make that increase.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the nutrition budget as presented?
So move.
A second.
All right, now we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Board members? Anyone have any questions, comments?
I always think it's strange when we're required to do it, so.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the requirement there from the budget for the.
It's a federal lunch program requirement, yes.
It's, yeah. It is what it is, unfortunately. Any other discussion? Okay, let's do a roll call on this as well.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Coran?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item are our salary scales for 2015-2016. There are no changes in the salary scales. They remain as they have been. The adjustments that are being proposed or that have been approved for employee compensation are made within the current scales. And this is presented this evening for your considered approval.
Do I have a motion, board members?
Okay, so the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, now we can discuss.
So the 11 cents, how, how is that working?
It's like a rounding kind of thing. Joe, you want to comment on it?
Yes, ma'am, it's due to the calculations in, in Munis and the, sometimes the calculations come out rounded up or down depending on the amount of time and employees and salary scales. It's just one of those errors that come in sometimes. So we put that in there to allow some flexibility because we have had some discrepancies up to 11 cents. For the year.
Doesn't add anything to the budget that we just approved, right?
No, ma'am.
Right. Okay. Sure we're out there with that.
Good question. Any other comments or questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Coran?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item is 2014-2015 supplemental appropriation. We're asking this evening that the board authorize a request to the Board of Supervisors for a supplemental appropriation to the 2014-2015 school operating budget in the amount of 207,600 dollars. This is because we did not initially get the state allocation for our one-to-one initiative because we had not funded the required match from our operating fund. We ended up matching the state requirement from our carryover money. So they didn't give us the 207,000 dollars until we had the match in hand. So basically now, this is just going to credit that 207,000 dollars to our 14-15 revenue.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion, board members? Any points of clarification for anyone? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, the supplemental appropriation has been approved.
Next item is to approve the presented English Language Arts, Career and Technical Education, Science and Social Studies textbooks for adoption, beginning with the 15-16 school year. The purchase of these books is included in the budget, which you've already approved. They are presented this evening for your action. They've been on display for the viewing by the board. They've been made public, available for viewing by the public. And they're presented this evening for your consideration for approval.
Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the textbooks as for school year 2015-16.
Second.
Okay, any discussion, board members? I just want to make one brief comment. Obviously, some concern has been raised about some of the content of the, the textbooks and what some of the conclusions or some of the generalizations are made, especially in the history books. You know, unfortunately, we live in a world where we're not going to be able to agree 100% with a whole lot of people, including those that write textbooks. And those textbooks will always have some things in them that we, as individuals, may disagree with. Some of the comments that have been raised in our public address and some of the emails we've been receiving, I take to heart and I actually agree with. And for those reasons, I will vote no tonight. If nothing else, then to be a symbolic vote that I do understand that. But I also want to make the point clear that we're never going to find a textbook that is 100% agreeable to any of us. We're all going to have things that are problems with it. And it's something that we just have to live with at this point. So with that said, any other discussion?
Well, I'll just have to comment that with some of the displeasure that folks have taken with the textbooks that we're about to approve is the truth, you know, plain and simple. All you have to do is look at history, it's there. In years past, there have been lots of complaints of what's been left out of textbooks that truly reflect the history of this country and the world. So I am, I'm happy to vote yes on this one, if we get ready to do that.
Okay, anything else? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. Textbooks have, adoption has been approved.
Our next item is the approval of a new member for our Special Education Advisory Council. And that new member is Cassie Fitzgerald. Ms. Fitzgerald and her husband have lived in the Blacksburg community for many years, and their son attends Blacksburg Middle School. This evening, I ask that you approve Cassie Fitzgerald as a new member starting with the 2014, with the remainder of the 2014-15 school year. And I think we've got Cassie present. If you'd like to stand, Ms. Fitzgerald, I'd like to thank you for being willing to be an active part of this very important committee.
Thank you.
Board members, do I have a motion?
I move that we approve Cassie Fitzgerald as a new member, starting with 2014-15 school year of the Special Education Advisory Council.
Second.
All right, any discussion or comments, questions? How long does this, are they a member?
Pat, how long are the length of terms?
Generally, two years.
Two years.
Okay. So this will be the rest of this year and then two additional years, essentially? Right, there's no limit? Okay, very good. Any other questions, board members? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right.
In the spirit of keeping the board and our public informed about some of the instructional initiatives inside Montgomery County Public Schools, tonight we have a presentation on the K-12 Reading Initiative. And it's going to be provided by Judy Borelsky, Debbie Fuster, Lisa Aker, and Dawn Wilson. Judy?
Thank you, Ms. Blackburn. We'd like to present on our K-12 Reading Initiative. And we'll begin with our elementary, and where we begin with elementary is always with our balanced literacy model. We adopted this in 2011, and it has been our guide. And what we did this year, the Literacy Action Team, the Elementary Literacy Action Team, focused our work on grades three through five, looking at our 120 minutes of language arts instruction, specifically looking at our whole group and small group instruction that focused on grade level standards. In addition to that, we looked at word study and providing staff development to deepen our understandings about how words work and that we can provide that information to students. So we have Dawn with us, who will share, begin to share some of our professional development.
Thank you, I'm Dawn Wilson, Instructional Specialist. Last spring, we asked the fourth and fifth grade teachers in the county for input regarding topics they would like addressed in the area of language arts. We used their feedback to plan ongoing professional development sessions throughout this current school year. Many teachers indicated they would like help with scheduling of the 120-minute language arts block to be a balance of whole group, small group, and independent reading, writing, and word study. We met with principals to present 15 different scheduling options and then jointly presented these models to the fourth and fifth grade teachers so they could find a model that most closely met their classroom needs. This here is a sample of one of the 120-minute reading block schedules. Whole group reading instruction was another area we focused on during the half-day professional development sessions. We specifically addressed interactive read-alouds and think-alouds, which are whole-class, grade-level, standard-based instruction. These lessons are not just the teacher reading to students. They're skill-based, focused lessons which incorporate high engagement strategies involving student interaction. Another session focused on the building of anchor charts. As teachers model a lesson or strategy, the teacher and students chart these ideas together for students to refer back to later, giving them an anchor for their learning. Teachers were also given a higher-level questioning strategy called the Question Matrix to use with their students. This strategy allows students to ask, answer, and create higher-order thinking questions. We also covered various online resources for nonfiction texts for teachers to use with their students. We have a video clip to share with you that we used with the teachers during our trainings. The teacher here incorporates many of the strategies that we discussed in this read-aloud, think-aloud lesson.
I squeeze Grandma's hand, and she stands and begins to read.
Maybe Grandma doesn't know how to read.
What?
Maybe the Grandma can't read.
You think it's the grandmother that couldn't read? And she's the one who's been practicing? How many of you think that too? Boy, my theory's really changing right now, is yours?
Yeah.
Whoa, I was not expecting that. I squeeze Grandma's hand, and she stands and begins to read. Mom and Dad and Sam are all astonished. "Are you going to read everything in that bag, Mama?" Dad asks her. He's grinning, but his eyes are brimming with tears.
He's so happy, he's crying.
Tell your partner what that means. So this process of talking and engaging with the text pulls them into their story in a way that captures them like a web, and they, they love it.
I cheer up every time I see that. In addition to the whole group model lessons, we also presented skills, strategies, and concepts that address small group, small group reading instruction. We focused specifically on the skills of author's purpose in the areas of poetry and nonfiction text, not inferencing using picture books, to extend strategies from whole group work to small instructional group work. Small group-centered work activities to engage all levels of learners were shared as well. Teachers are also able to access all of the resources we shared on the MCPS Google Drive. They were given time to plan both whole group and small group lessons and are uploading and sharing these lessons with colleagues across the county. We're going to watch one more brief clip that shows a teacher-led guided reading group with the teacher focusing on a specific reading skill.
So, your assignment was to read Chapter Two, Mark Miller, okay? And I asked you guys some questions about it. And specifically, we've been working on main problem, right? Identifying problems that we see in a story. So what is the problem in the chapter Mark Miller?
Everybody started at a new kid, like.
Okay.
We started at a new kid.
Good evening, I'm Debbie Fuster, the elementary literacy coach. Word study provides students with opportunities to investigate and understand the patterns in words. To implement word study effectively, teachers and students alike must become word detectives, engaged in an ongoing attempt to make sense of word patterns and their relationships to one another. With word study, spelling patterns and generalizations are discovered by students. Based on teacher input, teachers participated in several workshops this spring that focused on how to implement word study in their classrooms.
Hi, good evening, I'm Lisa Aker, the Level Literacy Intervention Coach. The Level Literacy Intervention Systems are designed to provide support to the most struggling readers and writers in our K-5 classrooms. The daily lesson framework contains all the components of our Balanced Literacy Plan. This year, each school was offered a refresher course on how to implement the program and select students who would be the most successful with this intervention. Our fourth and fifth grade teachers were also offered a grade-specific session on how to use this program within their classrooms. Another intervention program we are implementing in our elementary schools is iStation. This is a computer-based literacy program that uses dynamic assessments to place students at their instructional level and provide support where they need it most. Teachers can also use the information from the monthly assessments to provide remediation and to develop small group lessons within their classrooms.
I'll share with you our work at the secondary this year and our anticipated work next year. We, if you remember, adopted new textbooks in middle school last year. So we've partnered with our technology colleagues to provide professional development this year with the new resources. And we'll continue that because it usually takes at least two years for teachers to explore all. for teachers to explore all the resources and become very familiar with their new resources. We also reduced the length of our benchmark test in middle school this year. We focused only on the types of passages that are most challenging to our students, and we created what we call snapshots or quizzes that are only eight items long, again, so that teachers could use them on a daily basis or on a weekly basis, as opposed to waiting for a benchmark assessment. And we focused on the kinds of questions provided by the Virginia Department of Education to tell us were the most challenging for our students. So we wanted to prepare them for those things that, since we had not seen a released SOL test, we've seen one now, but we hadn't seen one earlier. And we'll look at our results based on this year's SOL test, and we'll decide what we'll do with benchmarks and snapshots next year, and how we might change those. This year, we put in place the Scholastic Reading Inventory for sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, so all of our middle schoolers do one common assessment. We began this practice about seven years ago in the elementary, so that we could track a student's progress from kindergarten through fifth grade, and we used one kind of assessment there, Fountas and Pennell Benchmark Assessment. We changed our assessment for middle school, because we needed something that would pick up the finer growth patterns that you see across middle school, and so it's the Scholastic Reading Inventory. And it also is our screener for Read 180, so it will help us detect the students who need to be in that program early. And we will continue using that, and we will begin to get a picture of the growth of our students, all students across middle school. Additionally, we worked with our intervention programs this year. We expanded Read 180 at Shawsville Middle and Christiansburg Middle, increasing the number of students that we served. Next year, we're going to pilot a sixth-grade extended English class, where the students will have 90 minutes every day, all year long, and it will be a combination of English Language Arts, Read 180, and Social Studies. We think Social Studies is a good match, because half of our reading standards are nonfiction, so that's Social Studies. Also, with our local assessment in Social Studies, that is going to be an original text that students, a primary source document, that students will read, evaluate, and write about. So again, it seems like a nice pairing. And in order to, in doing so, we have identified students who are good candidates for both Read 180 and Math 180. And in making this extended English class, we will be able to provide them Read 180 and Math 180, and allow them to have one elective. And we wanted to create a program that did not deny our students at least one elective. So we'll pilot it next year. As Lisa mentioned, we started iStation in our elementary schools, and that's providing us data that we can use to identify our students who might qualify for Read 180 in our middle schools. And it's allowed us to eliminate a test that we were doing in the past. So we're using our current data and not trying to streamline our testing, so that we're not over-testing students. We will be able to use our Scholastic Middle School Assessment to inform our high schools earlier next year, again, for, to continue to support our students in Read 180, or newly identified students in Read 180. We also expanded extended English courses at the high school, which means 90 minutes every day, all year long, for our students in need of reading and writing support. I only have anecdotal evidence right now, we'll be looking at, for the next three years, the SOL data, but I've been in some of those classrooms. The students are positive, they see themselves as learners, they're enthusiastic, and so anecdotally, I see some very nice things happening. We'd like to end, and it'll be hard to hear, it's a student, she's just about ready to graduate from Read 180, so perk up your ears, and we're going to listen very carefully and see if we can hear what she has to say.
Well, I didn't really take it serious, so I didn't know what this class was about, because I wasn't taking reading serious at all. I didn't know what I was making, what I was getting, I didn't even know I could barely even read also without a word. Until I got to Christiansburg, and they put me in this class, I didn't know what was going on, because I never heard of it, because I moved state to state, so I was just jumping from school to school, so I didn't barely know how to pay attention at school, or knew my English, or I didn't know what grade level I was actually reading on, and I was so confused, until I started Read 180, and I started to pick up big books and read big words that I never even seen before, that I thought I could never read before. Well, one book I read this year, I believe, like it was called Girl Stolen, it was a very good book about a girl getting kidnapped, and it was very good, that's why I cried to myself one time, because I said, "I didn't think I would read a book that big before in those words, I thought I could never read something like that."
I don't know, did you hear, I cried, because I didn't think I'd ever be able to read a book that big. So, we know we've got lots to keep working on, but we're working on it, and, and we know we are engaging our students, and we believe we are empowering them as well. Do you have any questions?
Thank you for your work.
You're welcome.
Board members?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Judy, Debbie, Lisa, and Dawn, thank you for all that you did to build success for each and every student that we have.
Absolutely.
The next agenda item is a presentation about our alternative education programs, Independence Secondary School and Rivendell, which are currently housed at the old Christiansburg Middle School. And we've been taking a look at how we might be able to better serve those students, and tonight, we'd like to talk to you a little bit about the individual programs and a direction that we are looking to pursue to improve the experiences of our students there. We've got Jennifer Weaver, and Larry Lowe, and Elizabeth Kennedy, who are gonna be speaking with us this evening, so why don't you all come on up front, and, welcome.
I'm gonna join folks too.
Oh, you're gonna help us too, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Good evening, thank you for allowing us this evening to share an update regarding our alternative programs. As you know, this year, Independence Secondary and Rivendell, the Phoenix Program and the ISAEP Program all moved to Old Christiansburg Middle School, and that's been an extremely positive experience, and so we're looking for ways to improve that experience. So tonight, Elizabeth Kennedy, Larry Lowe, and Julie Ligon will talk to you about our programs and our next steps.
Good evening, I'm Elizabeth Kennedy, and I oversee Rivendell. We currently have about 25 students who attend. The decision for services to be provided at Rivendell is an IEP process. The students are in grades nine through 12. We provide intensive supports, such as behavioral and academic interventions, based on the students' individual needs. I'm proud of the program and the students that we serve on a daily basis. Some of the students have really struggled in previous placements. This option, Rivendell, seems to work very well for them.
Independence Secondary School also provides special supports for students. Students in grades eight through 12 are enrolled through an application and recommendation process. We currently have about 58 students. We also house the Phoenix Classroom, an alternative to out-of-school suspension, and the ISAEP Program, where students are working towards a GED. This year, the students and staff have settled into new surroundings. During transition times, Independence was located on the Roanoke Street, Rivendell was at Wilson House, and at one time, Shawsville Elementary School. Being together this year has allowed us to open our eyes to how we might merge the programs to benefit both students and staff. Now that we are under one roof, we have been naturally merging resources.
As Larry has mentioned, the programs have just naturally started to lean on each other, since they are in the same building. We believe that a central arrangement will continue to facilitate access to educational services and resources for students who require non-traditional education experiences within an inclusive setting at no cost with existing resources. We are proposing that we merge the programs under one name. We can offer the same current services to all students, but merging, but by merging, we believe we can share resources when appropriate, and we'd like to change our name so that we can create a more positive identity and image. We believe that this will maximize resources and opportunities for students. Merging the programs is not a cost savings measure, but will be cost neutral. Recognizing the benefits to merge and share resources, students could receive instruction from any of the staff on site. This would increase opportunities for them in all areas, social, vocational, and academic engagement. We could share resources and support their transitions. It would give us greater flexibility in staffing and utilize strengths in different Likewise, this will open up more opportunities for us to collaborate and share professional development with our staff. Merging will also allow more support for the staff as we build an inclusive environment.
We have started to work with our stakeholders. We have discussed a new name, Montgomery Central. We're working on a shared vision, a unified handbook, and development of a schedule that will allow students to take advantage of new course offerings and community-based projects.
Due to the nature of our students, this will not change the program for some students, but it will allow us to share services for those students who would benefit from shared programming. Finally, we would simply like to say thank you for getting us back into a centralized location, and for your continued support for non-traditional services. We look forward to the upcoming year, and are glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Julie, Elizabeth, and Larry, thank you very much for sharing with us this year. Thank you.
It looks like you guys are all excited about being in one place and having each other as, as people for support.
We share a lot of resources.
How soon do you plan on implementing this new name and new process, or, you already started some of it, it sounds like?
We would like to do this starting next year.
You guys have been around for a long time. Working with these students, I remember several years ago, which I hope maybe next year, we can have a presentation from the students and have folks understand exactly how children go from just not succeeding, not performing at all in their traditional setting, to just flourishing under these programs. You know, I was here when one of these at least came on board, and, you know, the idea of just sending kids out of school because of out-of-school suspension and not having, punishing them twice, you're out of the classroom, and you're not getting any education. You know, the Phoenix Program was just wonderful to help hold those kids and keep them, you know, learning while they were understanding you've got to do better. So, the, the central idea, I think is wonderful, trying to take away some of that stigma that folks have with alternative education, which is one of the best things that can happen with some of our children, and I appreciate the work that you all do there.
Thank you for your support. So, we're hoping to move forward at this point to accomplish this, you know, combination and transition for the beginning of school year 15-16, and Elizabeth and Larry will provide great leadership, and Julie will provide great support, as will Dr. Nelson, for doing this. And, you know, we think it's gonna maximize the resources for all the students, and give us some more flexibility in terms of areas of certification and those kinds of stumbling blocks that we have. It doesn't involve any kind of permission from the state, because the scores for those students who are involved in SOL testing already go back to their home school, so they don't have a school number or anything, and it'd be really great to say, "I go to, you know, Montgomery Central," instead of saying, "Oh, Old Christiansburg Middle School." So, we're excited.
Is there any action that you need from us now or in the future?
Just tell me that you're okay with us pursuing, I mean, it is a program, it's not a school, it doesn't, you know, change anything other than delivery of services, so we just wanted to make sure that we kept you in the loop, and that you had an opportunity to ask questions, and see if you saw any stumbling blocks or concerns that, that you might perceive.
I'm glad you mentioned that's a program, not a building, because we know with some of the decisions we may be having to make with the Christiansburg Strand, that's gonna be a concern of folks, that you, you're doing that as a school now, you know, what about this? So, thank you for that distinction.
Thank you all for your support.
I spent some time last week with Mr. Lowe, and I really appreciated you taking some time to explain and show me around, and I really appreciate what you guys are doing over there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, okay, our next item on the agenda is our superintendent search process. I've asked Mr. King to come and share with us just very briefly some things that we just need to keep in mind as we move through this process, just from his perspective, legal, all that kind of stuff, as far as timing, and all those kinds of things, and then, once he is done, we will begin to talk through those issues that are at hand.
Mrs. Board, good evening. There really are very, very, very few legal requirements for you all as a board in appointing a new superintendent. The statute specifically states that you have to fill the position within 180 days of the vacancy, and as I understand it, that vacancy will occur at the end of September, so you will have 180 days from then to fill. You have the luxury of having received notice well in advance of that, so that you can begin a search process well in advance of that vacancy. Many school boards, as you might imagine, are in positions where they have to scramble to find someone on a much shorter timeframe, so that's one sort of luxury that you have. You, the only other requirement is that if you have not filled the position within 120 days of the vacancy, you have to communicate with Virginia Department of Education and let them know what steps you're taking. If you have not filled it by the end of 180 days, the Department of, or the Board of Education, State Board of Education, has the option of filling it for you. There are some requirements about what a superintendent's contract has to include, and what it looks like for how many years, that sort of thing, but that's probably premature to discuss now. From a process standpoint, again, there, there are no provisions in the law about how you conduct that. I'm sure Ms. Franklin and Ms. Bond can give you some historical lessons about what this board has traditionally done, at least the last two times. It's my understanding that you all issued first a request for proposals to search for a search organization, whether a private quote-unquote headhunter or other company to help facilitate your search. There is also the option of using the Virginia School Boards Association process. But what you all have historically done the last two searches is to hire a headhunter who has facilitated much of that for you. There is one interesting provision of the law, when a county is looking for a lead administrator or a school board is looking for a superintendent, you may conduct final interviews at an undisclosed location, and you can certainly understand why that occurs, to protect people who are applying, in case they have not yet informed their current employer that they are looking for work, and to allow you all to do those interviews confidentially. I think that's really about it. Ms. Franklin or Ms. Bond, am I missing something that you all have done before? Oh, excuse me, you also have had a very public side of things where you have invited public comment, and that the headhunter would probably help facilitate that, to receive input from the public about what it would like to see in your all's next leader. And then after that, at some point, clearly, there would be a contract negotiation.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. King, board members?
Guess something that I didn't understand, but I was informed better of, is that the VSBA could be used, even if you send out a request for a proposal, because they can respond to that proposal, is that true?
It, I don't want to misstate anything publicly, but I believe that we were advised last time that they would elect not to participate and respond to an RFP, meaning the VSBA. time that they would elect not to participate and respond to an RFP, meaning the VSBA. I think that's what the, Ms. Franklin or Ms. Bond, do you all remember?
I don't remember, you know, what their criteria was around that.
Yeah, I think as part of, it was either that they did not want to respond, or that they did not want to participate in the specific process that this board used last time, which was to interview multiple potential headhunters, and they elected not to be a part of that process. So I don't know if they didn't initially respond, or they just did not want to appear before you all to make a presentation. But I may be misstating that.
So from the beginning, a decision has to be made about the VSBA or not before a proposal goes out?
Right. If you are going to hire an outside entity, you have to go through a procurement process. And the Virginia School Boards Association, because you are already a member of that organization, offers that as a service, and they do it for a price point, which does not require you to go out, because it could be done by small purchasing procedures. So, I think, again, this board historically has said, we wanted to cast a wider net to find out what services might be able to help us to in turn identify our next leader, and did not want to restrict itself to simply opting into VSBA.
But the VSBA can respond to the RFP.
They certainly can if they choose to.
That's what I was asking.
Or it can if it chooses to.
They chose not to last time.
I believe that's correct.
If I could just add a comment to that, Mr. King. VSBA was specifically invited to participate in the process the last time, so if we do an RFP, we invite some vendors to participate. So they received the paperwork from us, asking them to solicit specifically. They were one of the firms that got it individually.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Mr. King? All right, thank you. Stay close. So, really, at this point, our decision needs to be which route we want to take. At this point, you know, our two options possibly would be to invite the VSBA in and give us their presentation, or we could choose to issue an RFP and see what kind of response we get from that way, from that perspective. So, I leave it open to you guys to discuss pros, cons for each one of those decisions.
Okay, well, I'll say that we put out the RFP, and if they choose to be a part of it, then they do. I know one of the issues with them is our staff is responsible for doing a lot of the organizing of public events and things like that, putting information out, using them in the past unless they've expanded what their services are, right? But then I also would be okay if we invite them to come and do a presentation for us on their own ahead of time. It doesn't matter. I'd like to, you know, see them included. It doesn't matter to me how we do it, I just want, let's get the ball rolling.
Okay.
I see, yeah, I definitely would like them to be involved, to hear more about what they provide. I wouldn't want our staff to have to do a lot of extremely amount of work, but I had some conversations with three counties around us that are using VSBA right now, and they said nothing but positive things. So I think it's definitely worth investigating.
And it is relatively cheaper to go through VSBA, I mean financially, financially they offer. But again, if they don't do, you know, what, you know, private headhunter will do in terms of the services, you know, of course, you pay, you know, you get the money's worth, you pay more. So it will be nice to see and compare, I think, what, how much they will cost and what services they provide.
Yeah, I'll just say, done this twice, and each time that we've used a headhunter firm, board members who were hesitant because of the cost, at the end of it were saying, they couldn't imagine it not being done that way. It's a lot of work.
What is our typical timeframe that we put the RFP out for?
Between two and three weeks.
Two to three weeks?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We can extend that for longer at the pleasure of the board.
Okay, so if we, scenario possibly could be, we put out an RFP for, let's say, two to three weeks. In the meantime, could we invite the VSBA in, let them do their presentation? We listen, we take notes, we hear what they have to offer. At that point, we see what the RFP brings back, what response we get from that, and decide if we want to have any of those folks come in and make presentation, is my understanding. And then we can make our decision at that point. Does that sound like a pretty reasonable course of action?
I think so.
Okay. All right. So at this point, I would assume we need an action, a motion, for us to do both of those things, to invite the VSBA and to create the RFP. And let's talk about timeframe. What kind of a timeframe do we want to give? Two to three weeks, four weeks? What are your thoughts?
Folks know that we're looking, so two weeks.
I'm okay with two weeks as well. Anyone else have any opposition to that?
Say two weeks and see what kind of feedback we get and...
Right.
Okay. So, do we want to handle these in two separate motions?
Yeah, I think you could group it.
Can we? Any opposition to that? Since someone needs to make a motion, because I can't do it.
We invite the VSBA and send out an RFP for two weeks.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? Mr. King, do you have anything to add to that? Anything that we need to consider in that that we're not considering?
No, you all already have a template for the RFP, so that should be turned around fairly quickly. And the other thought I had, since you asked me to come up, is that most superintendent searches are probably being wound up about now, because most will be ceded by July 1st. So I would think that the market for headhunting firms to help you later into the summer is probably pretty ripe.
Okay. Maybe that'll help with price, they don't have anything to do. We don't know. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Okay, the process has begun.
So, will we be contacting VSBA immediately to set up a date?
Yes, we will want to, we want to set that up. We will make phone calls probably tomorrow, see if we can get them in here. Hopefully, we can get on their schedule, it'd be great if we could do it at our next meeting, but I don't...
No, I think that's, I think that meeting's kind of full already.
Is that the 19th?
Yeah.
Is that a full meeting? Ms. Drake, what is on our agenda for the 19th?
The 19th is a full meeting, that's your second usual meeting. So we've got some years of the month facilities update. Instructional coaches in a survey. You also will meet in closed session prior to that meeting to discuss superintendent's evaluation.
And we have the building.
About what?
I'm so sorry, I didn't hear you, Ms. Graham.
The building?
That is on June 16th. Is when we're going to do the capital projects planning. We're also going to start that meeting with a closed session for the superintendent's evaluation.
Okay, so, my only concern about pushing it to June 2nd is that I've already been informed that two of our board members will not be here for that meeting. And I don't, I don't think we want to push it further than that.
Right. Well, we could contact them tomorrow, and they could say I could be here next week.
Have a special meeting.
Special meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. So here's what we'll do. We'll make those contacts tomorrow, we'll see what time they can get here, how quickly they can get here. I'll have them give us hopefully at least a couple of dates to choose from, and I'll give you guys a, either a phone call, probably a phone call just to verify all of that, and then follow it up with an email. Okay. Anything else? Along those lines? All right, moving on to unfinished business. Do any board members have any unfinished business that they would like to discuss? Hearing none, we'll move to new business. Do any board members have any new business that they would like to address?
I've been on the board 10 years, and it's very few things that I really kind of get my tail feathers up about. You know, the school start times, I have to say, is one of them. I think we've had a ton of people come out tonight. I think it's worthwhile that we at least put it back on the agenda and talk about it. I get stopped at Lowe's, I get stopped at Walmart, I get stopped in the shop, I get stopped in town, I get stopped at the bank. And, you know, a lot of people just can't come out, they don't have time to come out. I get stopped by older people, grandparents' age, and nobody has expressed their opinion to me that this is something they think our community should do.
Anyone want to make any comment to that?
I have to agree with Jamie. You know, I've had very few, very, very few conversations with folks who said that they agree with this time change, from across the county. From the time I get to work to the time I go home, no matter where I'm at, someone is having a conversation or making a comment about the change, and it's not positive. So, I would make a motion that we put this back on the agenda.
A second. Give me just a second, please.
Are you called up?
Yeah, I have to, it was too many clicks, I was worried you would move too fast for me.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion? I agree, I think it should be back on the agenda. My question, though, is to what end and for what purpose would we want to put it back on the agenda? For merely an action, for just discussion, for more information? What exactly are you wanting to do with that motion?
For me, it would be for another vote. I mean, folks are coming in numbers and helping us understand this is not what they want. This is not what they want. And they're going to keep coming. They're going to keep coming. At some point, they want to hear from us that we are going to change this, or we are not going to change this. So, that would be my, that would be my wish at this point.
And for me, just like Sam Smith had said, the student population doesn't want it either. But getting them to come out and speak, they're very intimidated about that. And I've talked to so many people that don't want it, that work and teach, and they're intimidated by that, too. And I just think, you know, and I have said, one way or the other, if you're for it or if you're against it, please come out, please come out, please come out. But until the vote was taken, I don't think people really registered that it was happening. And whether it be good, whether it be bad, yea or nay, and all due respect to everyone who's put time and effort and worked into it, I still just don't think people really grasped that it was, it was happening. And that's where my concern lies. And like I said, if I, if I heard a split decision out and about, and I'm out and about a lot, and even on Facebook, I mean, it got like 900 people in a day opposed. It's just, that's what opened my eyes, and I thought, wow, please come out. And tonight, they did. And I think in the past, we've taken allowance for people that have come out, and it's made us think about the decisions we make, and this is no different.
Any other discussion, board members? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the table. Ms. Drake, let's do a roll call, please.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
No.
Ms. Coran?
No.
Ms. Woolsey?
No.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Motion fails.
Okay, any other discussion? New business-wise? Okay, announcements and information? Any board members have any announcements or information to make?
I attended Blacksburg High School Into the Woods. It was a wonderful performance done by the Blacksburg High School Theater students, and a great job done...
I attended Blacksburg High School Theater Show Into the Woods. It was a great performance done by the theater students, and great music done by the music department.
And Christiansburg's got Seussical coming up, and I think it'll be great, too.
That's this weekend, correct?
Yeah, it's, it's...
It's the weekend after.
Okay, weekend after.
It's just always amazing when you attend these activities, the talent, you're thinking, I stepped out into New York, Montgomery County.
And it's amazing, I went to the Night on Silver Screen and took my four-year-old granddaughter, and they announced the Seussical, and she has asked me every week, Mimi, is the Seussical there yet? Is the Seussical? I cannot wait to take her, so.
I think we need to thank all of our teachers, especially this week, for teacher appreciation and all the volunteers that are doing exciting things for our teachers. We appreciate those, too.
I just want to express, I've spent the last four Thursdays going to every school in the county, and I have just been overwhelmed with the just quality of not only of our teachers and our staff, but the school and the students, the things that I see going on. I am just so impressed, and so I want to say thank you, obviously for Teacher Appreciation Day, but also just thank you in general. You guys are doing a great job. Mrs. Blackburn, your staff, and all of those teachers and faculty members are doing a phenomenal job, and I commend you for the work that is being done. Next item is our agenda preparation. You see the upcoming meetings. Our next meeting will be on May 19th, tentatively, barring that we have any other meetings between now and then with the VSBA. And then our first meeting in June will be on the 2nd. All right, I need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Re-adjourn.